Be convening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District two oh four on Monday, November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carubis.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Ms. Grover. Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
And Ms. Fostick.
Here.
We have a quorum. Mr. Rising, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, November twenty-first. So we have several board salutes. Mr. Carubis.
Matea Valley soccer coach named Coach of the Year. The board salutes Matea Valley High School Soccer Coach Chris Whaley, who was recently selected as the Regional United Soccer Coach of the Year. Chris was selected for having a successful two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two soccer season and his overall body of work that he presents to the team. He will be honored at the United Soccer Coaches National Convention this January. Congratulations, Coach Whaley.
Ms. Fostick.
All right. Matea Valley Junior achieves rank of Eagle Scout. The board salutes Matea Valley Junior Grant Kroll for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest advancement rank in scouting. Grant's Eagle Scout Service Project involved installing garden beds to improve a community garden located in a low-income housing area in Milwaukee and gave him the opportunity to plan, develop, and show leadership and initiative. Congratulations, Grant, on achieving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout.
Ms. Grover.
Wabonzi Valley Music Teacher Receives U.S. Navy Impact Influencer Award. The Board salutes Wabonzi Valley Music Teacher Kevin Carroll, who was recently nominated for the United States Navy Impact Influencer Award. Kevin was nominated by Wabonzi Valley Band alum Alex Lee for his continued support and mentorship of his students, which has inspired many to pursue challenging and impactful careers. Congratulations to Kevin.
Ms. Jane.
District two oh four students named National Student Production Award nominees. The Board salutes five District two oh four students who were recently nominated for two thousand twenty-two National Student Production Awards by the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences Foundation. Nominees were selected from high school student entries across the country in twenty-five programming and craft categories. The nominees from Matea Valley are Ani Apresyan, Roshini Arshid, Zara Salim, and Alorn Lane in the magazine program for The Main. The nominee for, from Niko Valley is Michael Lee, who was selected from the commercial category for his work on Otter Box. Over two thousand entries were judged by the regional chapters of the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences. The two thousand twenty-two National Student Production Awards will be streamed live on Thursday, November seventeenth. Congratulations and good luck to the nominees and their advisors, Nick Grijjova and Lisa Trout.
All right. Next up is our student representative report from Asad Karishi from Matea Valley High School. Welcome.
Hello. Oh, there we go. Good evening, everyone. My name is Asad Karishi, and I am the executive board representative for the class of two thousand twenty-three, and I'm very excited to be here with you all tonight. To start off, homecoming was a huge success. For the first time in three years, Matea Valley was able to host an indoor homecoming in which nearly two thousand two hundred students and guests enjoyed their time at the dance. Aspiring health professionals hosted a very successful blood drive in which they were able to receive over sixty units of blood. This donation is expected to impact one hundred and eighty lives. Matea Valley Senior Stugel hosted the very first Dodge for a Cause tournament in which over seventy students participated to raise money for the Breast Cancer Research Foundation. Over three hundred dollars was donated towards the foundation. The Matea Valley Art Staff hosted a dark horse gallery artist reception on Friday, October twenty-eighth. This gallery featured over fifty-five students artists, student artists and their artwork. This dark horse gallery featured work created with a range of media and processes and will be displayed through the second week of February. We are extremely proud of their, of these students and their creative achievements. Matea Valley student artists have been working diligently on four murals in downtown Naperville as part of the Kids Matter Project for the Van Buren Parking Garage. The student, each floor features murals created by students from District two oh three and two oh four's high schools. The, the students worked alongside professional artists, Dodi Mundero, and the murals can be viewed at the fifty South Main Street entrance to the parking garage. Matea's murals will be found on the first floor. Matea Valley art, art students have been working hard for, excuse me, Matea Valley art students have worked on pieces for the art exhibit at the Chicago four-by-five exhibition hosted by Oswego High School. There are sixty-five high schools participating in this art show with over two thousand pieces of artwork on display. The gallery will be open for viewing from six-thirty PM to nine PM on November ninth, with the award presentation taking place at seven-thirty PM. The marching Mustangs traveled to Minneapolis, Minnesota in early October. A highlight of the trip was to visit the University of Minnesota where they received a clinic with Betsy McCann, the Big Ten's first female marching band director. Professor McCann was a wonderful host, even reserving the entire stadium for the marching Mustangs rehearsal. Thank you, Professor McCann. ISU Symphony Orchestra, under the direction of Dr. Glenn Block, visited Matea on October twentieth. Their visit concluded with a side-by-side performance with the members of Matea Valley's Chamber Strings. Thank you, Dr. Block. And for athletics, Matea Valley yet had a great athletic season. Two golfers qualified for state, Macy Martin and Kyle Booker. Congratulations on your achievements. Girls volleyball had a very successful season, ranking third in the DVC. Great job, Lady Mustangs. Boys soccer had a very successful season, finishing off in the regional championship against West Aurora. The boys did not go down without a fight. They worked hard all throughout the game as well as throughout the season. Girls Swim and Dive hosted a meet this past weekend where two hundred medley relay team, where the two hundred medley relay team qualified for state. This team consists of Haley Reif Schneider, Marlee Schroeder, Amanda Schmidt, and Ally Leslie. Ally is also a state qualifier for the fifty free. Good luck at state, Lady Mustangs. If you get some time, especially tomorrow if you're voting anti-Matea Valley, you're gonna just, you have to stop by our trophy cases to see all the hardware our hardworking Mustangs have earned. That's all I have for the November board report. Thanks, everyone. Stay safe, and as always, go, go Mustangs.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Tally has some items to talk about regarding the board.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, to our Indian Prairie community. I want to inform you that our Board of Ed recently received from the Illinois Association of School Boards for the fifth time in a row, the two, two thousand twenty-two School Board Governance Recognition. The School Board Governance Recognition Program acknowledges school boards that learn and practice effective governance behaviors as identified by the Illinois School Boards foundational principles of effective governance through participation in and support for board development programs and events. The primary focus of this program is on full board development and participation. Effective school boards understand that excellence in local school board governance requires full board commitment to obtaining the knowledge, skills, and abilities critical to good governance. Indian Prairie School Board was just one of thirty-three school boards that were given this award this year, and since two thousand fourteen, we join only three other award districts that have received the award consecutively, and I congratulate the whole board on that, on that achievement. Additionally, our Board of Education includes individuals who volunteer countless hours to serve our community. I want to take a moment to recognize their recent earned distinction from the Illinois Association of School Boards. This Illinois Association of School Board recognizes school board members for the time and effort they devote to leadership activities. Three of our members have been noted as distinguished board leaders. Members receive their recognition status by attending division meetings, participating in regional and statewide workshops, taking courses through IASB. We want to congratulate Ms. Susan Demming, Mr. Justin Carubis, and Mr. Mark Rising for their awards. November fifteenth is School Board Appreciation Day as determined by the Illinois School Boards Association. I want to say it's an honor working with our board members. They each genuinely concern about our district, about our children, about our staff, and about our community. They respect each other even when they may disagree. They ask my team and me the tough questions to ensure that we are being as effective and efficient as possible for our district and, more importantly, our students' success. The Governance Award is a testament to knowledge about how to work as a governing board, and I congratulate each one of you for that achievement. Congratulations. I just want to show to our community, this will be the award that they will have and put up. We'll add this one to our wall, and then I will give out certificates to Ms. Demming, Mr. Rising. Congratulations. And I think we have some pins as well about governance that each board member will be able to wear.
So I would like to add my thanks to the board members for all of the work that went into getting this recognition. We are, as Dr. Tally mentioned, we're one of thirty-three that received it this year. There are, I believe, eight hundred and fifty-seven school districts in the state of Illinois, so that gives you a sense of how few got this out of the set of school boards that are in the state. So it takes extra effort and time for each person to attend things outside of their regular work on the board, and it is greatly appreciated. Really a top-notch professional group. Thank you. So our next agenda item is public comment. It's now time for our public comment. Sixty minutes is allowed, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and our school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents. So we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you are, if you currently have children in our schools. So tonight we have five speakers. The first speaker is David Shivers.
Good evening. My name is David Shivers. I'm a parent of four students in IPSD two oh four schools. My oldest daughter is at Crone Middle School this year after switching from realignment from Gregory last year. My two other daughters and my son are at Bilt Elementary. My wife Rebecca is a school nurse at a neighboring high school. We lived in the district since January twenty twenty. I'd like to start my comments to the school board with gratitude and thanks. We moved here over Christmas break between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty from Ohio. There was a lot of paperwork had to be filled out and the staff at Bilt to help make sure our three daughters were enrolled and even able to tour the school on the, before the classes started back up after New Year's Day twenty twenty. My comments for tonight, the concept for One Book, One School is excellent. Having the entire student body at a school read the same book and discuss it together promotes unity, community, and learning. Unfortunately, for reasons unknown to me, the staff at Crone Middle School selected the book A High Five for Glenn Burke. This fiction book written in the perspective of a sixth-grade boy is inappropriate for middle schoolers. The book discusses a sixth-grade boy dealing with coming out to his best friend who is a girl, lying about his friend being his girlfriend, being worried about HIV, people who don't support him as being homophobes, and coming out as being a great experience. I also find it concerning the character in the book does not talk to his feelings with his parents. Here are some concerning excerpts from the book. Silas, the main character, tells his baseball coach that he thinks he is gay. A sixth-grade boy, Silas, is left home alone for a self-care day. The head coach of the team that he is on decides to say that kids can't college if they're gay, and then because of that, one coach leaves and another player quits the team. People who aren't comfortable with LGBTQ-inclusive language are broken. And then one of the discussion questions the students had was, when should you be a trusted person for a friend, and when is it better to call in support? Advocating for keeping secrets from parents. These topics were being discussed in homeroom classes with general subject teachers. My question is, why is it appropriate to have these discussions with middle schoolers and their teachers? My wife and I found out about the book from our daughter who told her she didn't like the book and what it was about. We had no idea of the subject matter for the book until we read it, read into it more. At that point, we contacted the school about opting out of the One Book, One School for the time being. Our daughter was given the option of going to the guidance counselor's office or sit in the hallway during the reading and discussion time. From what our daughter and her friends have told us, the students, many other students at the school did not enjoy the book for One Book, One School, or uncomfortable from what it was discussing. However, they didn't know they could walk out, or in the case of her friend who was Muslim, her parents were afraid of their daughter having her grades penalized if she did not comply with the teaching. I believe part of the confusion for this book and what to do with it is do with it not being part of official curriculum. While other middle schools in the district are doing One Book, One School, they are not using the same book for the process. The book that was selected leads to discussion that is about sexual orientation. In the September twelfth board meeting, the school board here itself repeatedly assured parents that, among others, the sexual orientation identity would not be a part of the sex ed curriculum for middle schoolers. My wife and I have coached and led small groups for middle school students at the churches.
Ms. Donahue, the speaker's time has ended.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I will. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jamie Wygant.
Good evening. I also want to express appreciation for teachers, administrators, board members. I'm the son of public school teachers, also and a former school board member. But as a curious parent, I made a phone call the other day to request a tour of the Crone Middle School library, and during the phone calls, there seemed to be some apprehension from the principal to accommodate this, but after much insistence, I was referred to the deputy superintendent, and Mr. Akarius was gracious enough to meet me there and accompany me for a tour. I was surprised to notice almost every bookshelf had books marked with a conspicuous rainbow. And one might interpret this unique marking as a school's promotion and endorsement of certain ideals, values, lifestyles. And I just want to note that this is potentially divisive and offensive to others who may hold dear the rainbow and appreciate it as meaningful to their religious belief. And we suggest the origin and intent of these rainbow stickers be further investigated slash evaluated. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alicia Smith.
Good evening. I am here to discuss equity in District two oh four. First, I would like to discuss equity and busing. If you live in a neighborhood where a Aurora Title One school is located, your students will be denied busing to one of two oh four schools even though they have to walk alongside a busy roadway or cross a busy intersection because they live less than one point five miles from their school. Yet, if you live in the more privileged neighborhoods of Oakhurst, Stonebridge, Breckenridge, Ashbury, you are also less than one point five miles from your two oh four school, but you are given busing and safety and will not have to walk alongside a busy roadway or cross a busy intersection. This is one way that District two oh four supports those who are privileged, and those who are from marginalized communities are not supported. The second area of inequity in District two oh four is boundaries. During the last boundary change, the decision was made to have all three Aurora Title Schools feed into the same middle school, which is Fisher, which already has a preponderance of needs. If you look at the low-income percentage of two oh four as a whole, it is eighteen percent. If you look at the low-income percentage of a whole of two oh three, it is fifteen percent. If you look at two oh three's IAR scores for their title schools, every single one of their title schools are well above the state average in both ELA and math. This is because two oh three designs its boundaries so that no school is over thirty percent low income. There are five two oh four schools that are above thirty percent low income. Not surprisingly, only one of these schools are above the state average in both ELA and math. That school is Gomber, which this administration last December proposed a boundary map that would increase that low-income percentage to over fifty percent. The decisions that are made in two oh four are not leading to equity and busing or boundaries, but yet other districts are making those decisions with their students in mind so that all students can have an equitable education and have successful schools. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kristin Racine.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Rochay. My husband and I have four children. Our oldest two are five-year-old identical twins who started kindergarten this fall. This is my first experience. I am a former educator, and I taught, have education for eleven years. It's my first experience with a school district as a parent. My name should sound familiar to you. I sent an email to Dr. Tally. Each of you were CC'd on it, as well as other district-wide administrators. It was titled Missing Student Incident. On Monday, August twenty-second, the second day of kindergarten, one of my sons went to the bathroom with a buddy, time unknown, opened a school door, door unknown, left school, time unknown, and eventually came home, route unknown. I was alerted by our ring doorbell camera at exactly twelve fifty-six PM per our timestamp. I opened the door at twelve fifty-six per our door monitoring alert. Thank God I was home. How is there no alert on an exterior door or any announcement that a door at our school has opened? No interior or exterior cameras to see who opened the door or which direction that student went. How does a barely five-year-old special education kindergartner get more than five feet from a school in our district without anyone knowing? How does our home have better security protocols and monitoring than a school with hundreds of children? We are incredibly fortunate that this incident did not have more significant consequences and that he knows how to find our home. Beyond the disappointing response from the district, what we find most alarming is the fact that this incident has put a very bright spotlight on the significant security vulnerability. In this day and age, you would think that a door at any school being opened completely undetected would alarm every adult that wants to protect our children and schools. I pray, 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 when this happens again or something worse, there's as good as outcome that we had than, as we had. I'm not here this evening to pick apart what happened or where we believe things could have been implemented or avoided. Why I'm here tonight is to say how frustrating it is, has been to attempt to address these security issues with the school administration, district administration, as well as this board. At every step we have taken, we have not felt that we've been heard. For lack of better description, we have gotten the runaround for the last few months, and no one has taken this seriously, at least not on record. I'm here as a concerned parent and a member of the community to say that no parent should be made to feel the way we have, nor should they had, have to endure what we perceive as lack of, lack of concern, compassion, and what I can only describe as outright disrespect. This is Naperville District two oh four, one of the finest districts in the country, one of the top-ranked schools in the state and country. We need to do better. We have the means to do better. Why are we not doing better? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Krishna Vora.
Good evening, respected sir and madam. I just came here. My daughter is a Project Arrow elementary school kid, and I'm also a board member of PA PTA as a secretary. We're trying to, we are hearing that there has a PA curriculum changes. I'm just coming for a request. Like, we don't have much information on that, and we are trying to reach out for the information. We could not find anything on the websites or could not reach anyone. We just wanted to have, like, the PA curriculum changes. The more and more the parents are eager to know and learn about it. That's only the request. Just, we wanted to have some information on that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we move to our action items and, oh, sorry, our consent agenda items and the superintendent report. So, Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the board. November has been designated as Native American Heritage Month, and it is a time for us to celebrate the many contributions made by Native Americans or Indigenous people to our country and to the world. Our schools will incorporate lessons related to Native Americans as part of their instructional program. The first quarter of this, of the instruction has been completed as we moved into our second quarter of learning. Parent-teacher conferences are scheduled for November seventeenth in the evening and all day on November twenty-first. As an FYI about a national trend that has an impact on our transportation and food services, I want to share that last week, seven of our buses had their catalytic converters stolen, and two of our food service trucks had their converters stolen. Our vehicles were parked within a fenced enclosure with barbed wire at the top. Nonetheless, the thieves did cut through the chain-link fence to get to the vehicles. Mr. Ron Johnson, who oversees transportation and food services, was able to ensure that our bus routes were still covered and food services was not, were not interrupted. Additionally, we know of two employees' cars that had their converters stolen while parked on school lots during the school hours. We ask everyone to remain vigilant and keep us informed if you see something or know something. In light of the fact that I, that I spoke earlier, and will add a few more words when we talk about mental health and our achievement data, I'll now turn it back over to Ms. Donahue.
Special thanks to Mr. Johnson. He has a very, very difficult role that is pretty unappreciated sometimes, I think, or not unappreciated, but. unappreciated sometimes, I think, or not unappreciated, but people don't realize how much work he does to support our district's transportation and food. With a national bus shortage, driver shortage, he has worked diligently to make sure we have buses and now to deal with catalytic converter problems is just additional issues on top of what he typically has to deal with. So, many thanks to him for keeping us up and running. So, next we move to our consent agenda items. I need approval for consent agenda items D through S.
I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items D through R.
Second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call liberal?
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
And Ms. Demming?
Aye.
The motion passes.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I need a motion for consent agenda item S.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda item S.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call liberal?
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
I abstain.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
And Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
The motion passes. Next, we move to our action items. I need a motion and a second to appoint Mark Rising as the IASB Alternative, alternate governing board representative.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Mark Rising as IASB alternate governing board representative.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? I'll just make a point. So, our IASB conference is in two weeks, and we are electing a delegate to voice our opinion in the delegate session, so.
Just for clarification, Natasha is our primary IASB governing board representative, and she has other commitments that particular day presentation, so I'll be serving as her alternate to be at the delegate assembly.
Yeah, to further clarify, we submitted a proposal to give a speech or chair a session at the conference, and we were selected, and our session is the same time as the delegate assembly. So, we're honored to be able to be presenting at the same time. All right, so, Michelle, will you please call liberal?
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
And Mr. Rising?
The motion passes.
Boiling for myself.
Could say no.
All right. Next, we need a motion and a second to approve the 2022 Illinois Association of School Boards constitutional amendments as presented.
I move that we approve the 2022 Illinois Association of School Boards constitutional amendments as presented.
I second.
Any discussion?
Just for clarification, I sent you all individually an email. This was on page 11. This will be voted on at the delegate assembly at the school board conference. It is my understanding that they're voting on all of these as once, so if you have any questions, I can look into it, but I don't think there should be probably any questions on these.
Michelle, will you please call liberal?
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
And Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
The motion passes. Now, I need a motion and a second to approve the recommendations of the Resolution Committee for Resolutions 1 through 3 and existing amended positions 4 through 8 as presented.
I move that the board approve the recommendation of Resolution Committee for Resolutions 1 through 3 and existing amended positions for 4 through 8 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just for clarification and try to make this easier than we have done in years past, instead of voting on all of them individually, which we can if some of them are from this motion, but this is approving the recommendation of the Resolution Committee. So, however, they leaned on that particular resolution or amended, existing amended position. It is agreeing with their position. So, I don't know if anybody wants to discuss any of them individually.
I think, Ms. Grover, did anyone raise any issues with the Resolution Committee positions?
Nope.
I, there may be.
I think Mark had one-on-one, but other than that, but.
So, we have amended position statement number eight that we submitted as a district for the state of Illinois. There may be some dissension from some school boards in the northwest suburbs regarding this resolution. So, chances are this will get pulled from the consent agenda at the delegate assembly, and I will have to defend our position statement. So, if, if the board wanted to send me individual comments that you would like me to include in defending our position, I'd be more than happy to include those. I have less than five minutes to speak, so, and you know me, I speak too long. So, you know, let me know if you wanted to include anything.
For the audience's sake, we should repeat what that resolution, amended resolution is.
Yeah, I can read it. So, this particular amended position statement, or actually edits the previous one, and it reads as follows. "The Illinois Association of School Boards shall continue to support the nonpartisan election of school board members in a nonpartisan election. IASB," which is the Illinois Association of School Board, "strongly believes that school board candidates should not solicit, accept, or receive either a donation, financial contribution from a special interest group, political action committee, or political parties." We added in that last sentence about not solicit, accept, or receive based on those groups. That was not previously in the language, and the Resolution Committee overwhelmingly supported the change in this position statement.
Okay. Michelle, will you please call the rule?
Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Rising?
Yes.
Mr. Rising, sorry. Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
And Ms. Jane?
Yes.
The motion passes. All right. Our next item is our discussion with Matt Shipley regarding the tentative 2023 tax levy.
All right. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. As Board President Donahue mentioned, tonight is our presentation of the 2022 tentative levy that will be collected during calendar year 2023. Tonight's presentation is consistent with strategic plan priority number four and Board Policy 4-30 Revenue and Investments. We began discussing this property tax levy and its implications almost ten month, almost nine months ago at the February 28th Board of Education meeting. That was the first time we looked at a budget or forecast presentation for the current '22, '23 fiscal year and the subsequent years. This tentative levy is built into our current operating budget and is consistent with the assumptions that we included in that budget we approved at the August 22nd Board of Education meeting. Tonight, we will do a quick overview of the property tax process. I will go through our tentative levy request, the taxpayer impact of that request, and then finally, I will cover the next steps that will lead to the adoption of this levy prior to the statutory deadline of the final Tuesday in December. And I apologize if others are not able to see the screen, but I will go forward.
They're working.
Okay. Here we go. So, as mentioned, just wanted to start with a quick overview of the property tax process as it works for a district that's governed by the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, or PTEL, which, that does apply to Indian Prairie 204. This is a multi-step process that involves several different agencies. It starts with our township assessors, who are in charge of assessment for every property within their township. They turn in those assessments to the county supervisor. So, each county has a supervisor of assessments who reviews those, and they are the individual who issues the various exemptions that different properties qualify for. The Illinois Department of Revenue reviews all the county supervisors and applies what's known as an equalization factor to assure property values are consistent across the state. All this is sort of being done concurrently. There's a deadline of November 15th for some of those initial assessments and reviews, but all that is done, again, as part of building into our levy that we're adopting or starting the adoption process this evening. I will point out, the school district has no role in that assessment process or issuing those exemptions. I would encourage any taxpayers who have questions about their particular property or any, any assessment values or any exemptions they believe they may qualify for to work directly with their county supervisor. Once our levy is adopted, there are still several other remaining steps. We turn in our levy to the county clerk at both DuPage and Will County. They will be in charge of reviewing that levy, confirming that it complies with PTEL, and they will issue what's known as the limiting rate to ensure that that levy does comply with the PTEL standards. And they will issue a final extension report to the district towards the end of March, which will, which will detail our final property tax extension and the amount we can expect, again, to collect in calendar year 2023. So, tonight's levy is really, really just an ask. We are producing a levy as part of this, this discussion tonight and our action item on December 5th that will be turned to the county. The county will review and, and likely reduce that amount to ensure it complies with PTEL. Finally, it's the county treasurers that actually handle the tax billing and collection of those funds and remitting those funds to the school district. So, again, no taxpayers are paying any money directly to the school district. For both DuPage and Will County, tax bills are due, tax payments are due on those bills on June 1st and September 1st. So, I will point out that in order for tonight's levy to be adopted, passed, and collected, will involve the work of one school district, two counties with three different offices at each county, so six offices total, four townships, and the state of Illinois Department of Revenue. So, there are a lot of different agencies involved in this process. So, with that said, above is a summary of tonight's tentative levy request. So, you will see the 2022 tentative levy in the first column. We are requesting $314,883,166 of operating funds. That is an $18.7 million increase from our 2021 extension of $296.2 million, representing a 6.32% change. Our bond and interest tentative levy, and this is, this is something we do not have authority over as the district tonight or as our adoption on December 5th. This is already set based on the bonds that have already been issued, but our bond and interest levy is anticipated to actually decrease by 1.8% or $507,000, and it'll be an amount just over $27 million. Under PTEL, our operating levy increase is limited to the Consumer Price Index, or 5%, plus an allowance for new property. So, tonight's levy is designed to capture that 5% amount, as well as build in an allowance for new property that's been added to the district. As the Board of Education knows, we have several residential developments that will add property tax revenue to the district, but will also add students that we will be responsible for educating. So, the purpose of, again, building in that increase above the 5% is to ensure that we capture that new property. Again, part of the reason we've, we've spent a lot of time talking about this, this levy and its impact at prior meetings is this is the first time that's, in many years, that CPI number's been that high. We are basing this off the 2021 CPI, which came in at 7%. That's the first time that CPI has been above 5% since the PTEL legislation was introduced. And again, it's, it's over 3% higher what the last 10-year average has been of 1.95%. As already mentioned, our bond and interest levy is determined based on scheduled payments of bonds, and our bond and interest levy will continue to decrease, similar to what's shown above there, until our final bond payment on December 30th of 2026. Just, just quickly, here is a slide that shows that debt service schedule and the anticipated levy related to debt service over the remaining lives of the district bonds. Again, we're, we're seeing savings as these bonds are being, being paid off, and those savings will partially offset any operating increases going forward. All of the district's debt is fixed-rate debt, so we've not been negatively impacted by the recent rate increases we've seen in the debt markets and has obviously made a lot of, a lot of news as the Federal Reserve continues to increase interest rates at an almost unprecedented rate. As we, as we cover throughout our budget process, property taxes continue to represent the large and largest and most consistent revenue source, representing 77% of district revenues. It's also the only district revenue source that has a built-in adjustment for the Consumer Price Index. So, our state and federal revenue sources, which, which to begin with represent a significantly smaller source of revenue, have not been keeping up with that Consumer Price Index increase. That has created challenges that we've covered in other presentations as we see rising costs really across all expense categories for the district. We'll again mention that our state of Illinois funding through the evidence-based funding, through the evidence-based funding program is at 84%. That is a recognition by the state that we do not have all the resources we need to implement all the evidence-based funding components. The final piece to cover tonight, this is a new requirement under Public Act 102-0895. We are required to disclose at our tentative levy presentation and our public hearing the cash and investments held by the district at June 30th of 2022 or at the most previous fiscal year. That amount was approximately $192 million. About half of that, $150 million, was received in the month of June, as it was the first installment of the current property taxes we received. So, one of the challenges with, with this required disclosure, as well as when we talk about this number through the budget process, is that it represents a relatively high point for the district. We tend to manage towards the low point, which is significantly lower than that. Again, a month prior, our, our low point would have been $150 million less than that. We did also have about $66 million of obligations, that kind of claims, if you will, against that $192 million at June 30th. That included salaries and benefits payable, accounts payable, various construction commitments, and other liabilities. So, just moving on to the taxpayer, the taxpayer impact for the average district taxpayer. We are fortunate in our district that our housing values, our property values have generally kept pace with the CPI over the past several years. And as a result, we believe our levy, based on the initial information we have from our townships and counties, is our levy will maintain a stable tax rate for those property taxpayers. For a $300,000 market value home, we estimate this, this levy will represent a $223 increase in the annual property tax payment. That's estimated to be a 4.48% increase for the total property tax payment. So, our current property taxpayers would see a 5% increase in the levy related to operating funds and see a .52 decrease, .52% decrease related to their bond and interest portion of that levy. The difference between that 4.48% and the 6.32% we saw earlier, which is the district fund, is the amount built into the levy for new property. is the amount built into the levy for new property. Again, those are estimated numbers. The actual impact will vary based on changes of each individual property's assessed value. We have actually seen that properties in Will County are projected to increase in value a little bit more than DuPage County. That's a little unusual and against trend for our districts. So we may see some shifting of that property tax burden between the counties or different areas within our district. The final piece I'll point on with that, obviously, we know with the CPI environment we are in, we are passing on a levy increase that is larger than it has been in the past. I will point out, the State of Illinois issued a $300 property tax rebate to all residents. Residents should have received that over the past month or so. And that was designed to partially offset the impact of this and the prior levy during this time of rising CPI. So with that said, the next steps for adoption of this levy will occur at the December 5th Board of Education meeting. We will hold a public hearing at 7:05 PM, and that will follow with an action item to adopt the levy. At that point, our office, the business office, will file the levy with DuPage and Will Counties and will work directly with the counties, the remaining steps to finalize that levy and have it become our property tax extension for the year. And then we will start, in February 2023, we will start working on our fiscal year 2024 budget and forecast, and we will be in front of the board presenting that information at a board meeting in February. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
Mr. Rising. Okay. All right, Mr. Krubus.
Great presentation. I support the levy request, but I'm going to try to conceptualize it for myself. So I'm going to pontificate and tell me when I'm wrong. We have about a $401 million budget. And we are constrained on how much we can ask local taxpayers to pay for that budget. And so we are asking local taxpayers to pay $314 million of that budget. And that is constrained by how much we can increase it, which is limited by inflation, and the amount of new property in here, and we anticipate in the district. So we can't just ask for $401 million from the local taxpayer as part of this levy. The most we can ask is $314 million, right?
Correct so far.
I know I'm going pretty, okay. So the only thing that we have control over in all of these numbers is the budget, which we set a few months ago, and the levy request. And the levy request has a bunch of restrictions on how much we can ask. We can always, we can ask for less, but we can't ask for more from the state. We can't ask for more from the federal government. I guess we can ask, but they'll always say no. So this is the most we can ask from the local taxpayers. And since it's in line with the budget we approved, I think we should all support this. Thanks.
Ms. Vazdick.
Most of my questions were answered prior to the meeting and explanations, but really, I just wanted to say thank you for your clear and thorough explanation for the district layperson, the community member, because I think this is something easily misunderstood, and the clear laying out of the process is really helpful. Thank you.
Ms. Jane.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you, Board Member Krubus, for your pontification. I think it did clarify things for me. I just have one question on Slide 7. This last bullet point on the new disclosure that we need to do, can you explain why? What is the purpose of this disclosure? Do we know?
We'll give Board Member Krubus a shot, and I can editorialize. I'll let him editorialize, and then I will.
It's to make the school districts look bad. So they try, it is a disclosure which tries to let the community know how much cash we have. But it's, instead of doing a average cash balance or your lowest cash balance, it says, when you get all of your money for the year, half of it, let's measure how much cash you have then. When a budget has ups and downs and highs and lows. So part of it, I think, is the state's intent to try to make the school districts appear richer than they are.
Which, if I could add one thing to that, the other thing that's interesting about it is we have always respected our taxpayers' money and have always maintained a 30% fund balance. So when this looks at it, it's at a high point. So it makes it look, because we get that payment from the local assessor, so it's not a realistic measurement, as Mr. Krubus said, of what our fund balances typically are. We maintain around a 30% fund balance. There are districts in this state that overtax their residents that maintain 70, 80, 90% fund balances of what their revenues are.
So this number may influence public perception of what we have, but does it have any meaningful influence on any of our funding?
No, this is a required disclosure only. It's not being used as part of the levy calculation. It's not being used as part of the state funding formula. It is a required disclosure by the district. It was part of a little bit of a larger bill specifically that did include some language that was favorable towards school districts. And so generally, when that happens, there's usually something that's kind of added to counter it, if you will, just kind of part of the political process. So part of the bill did give districts a little bit more flexibility on the on the ability to control the levy process and maybe control the levy. And the sort of give and take on that was, well, if we're going to give them that, we should make sure that this number's being disclosed as well. Yeah, I'll kind of echo or confirm what's being said already. You know, it's a point-in-time number for every district. And every district, for some districts, this is going to be one of the high points, which it is for us. For other districts, depending on which county they're in, depending on what what portion of their funding is property taxes versus state, it may be a medium number, it may be a low point. I don't know offhand, but to compare one number on June 30th and say that's the cash number and that's the only cash number is, in my opinion, a little misleading or inconsistent. And, you know, the other point that went to some of what Board Member Krubus said already is the fourth-largest district in the state and a district that has a budget of over $400 million. Our number is going to be large, but again, relative to the expenditures we have, the total revenue, the number of students we serve, again, when we look at our actual ebbs and flows of the cash balance throughout the year, it's a number, it's a number close to what we need to ensure financial stability for the district.
Thank you.
Ms. Dumbing.
Matt, thank you so much for your for your review and explanation. Staying on Slide 7, you know, as you indicated, we're the fourth-largest district and really looking at a revenue intake and requirement that supports the level of our size of our district. And just wanted to point out again, an area that we've talked about a number of times, but evidence-based funding and how much of the percentage that our district receives regarding, in comparison to what the state indicates that we really need to have to provide and meet the actual needs in those particular requirements and buckets that it says, again, which is 84% that we're able to see from evidence-based funding. Can you just share a little bit what that means and why, and how that plays into our discussion and requests for today?
Sure. As, going back to an earlier comment, we have very little control over what we receive from the state and federal governments. We can always ask, but we generally do not receive. The evidence-based funding program began, we're starting our sixth year of evidence-based funding, and every district was assigned this evidence-based funding percentage, which tried, which was an effort to demonstrate each district's unique need for funding and where they currently were with both state and local funding. For Indian Prairie School District, our number's traditionally been in that low 80s number. We've ranged from 78 to 84%. So it's a recognition that we do not have the resources that a district ideally would have to provide all components of that evidence-based funding formula. There is significant variation throughout the state. There is Naperville District 203, as the Board knows, is well over 100% funded. They have traditionally ranged between 115 and, I believe, 118 or 119% funding. Of the eight comparable districts that we compare to and would be considered some of the highest-performing unit districts in the state, we have the lowest evidence-based funding percentage. That also translates into the lowest funding per pupil, again, pretty significantly, generally $2,000 to $3,000 lower than our comparable districts per student. The challenge for us is that in the state, there are districts that are even lower than us, including some other large urban districts, districts that have some political influence as well, districts such as Chicago Public Schools, Rockford Public Schools, Elgin. Those are all districts that are lower than us, having funding percentages in the 60s or low 70s. And so most of the new state funding has gone to those districts or similar situated districts. So I kind of like to say we're stuck in the middle. We're not one of the districts that has demonstrated that we are able to fully support our students exclusively with local funding. But we're not one of the districts that's on the neatest ends and is really receiving significant new dollars as a part of evidence-based funding. We're kind of stuck in the middle. The formula was designed that over time, we should start seeing more incremental state funding and start moving closer to 90%, which was the target for all districts. But at this point, again, entering year six and not really seeing that movement, it does seem we're still several years away from really seeing the state funding kick in and to where it would make a significant impact in our operations. And ultimately, the goal would be that it does reduce our reliance on property taxes and the annual levy.
Thank you so much. It's something we've talked about a variety of times, but it's really important for our public and our stakeholders to understand where we stand in relation in regards to evidence-based funding. So thank you for the continual sharing of that information.
Ms. Grover.
I have no questions.
Mr. Rising.
So just a comment. Evidence-based funding went into effect the 2017, 2018 school year, if I recall correctly. That was when the State of Illinois said that it would not hold school districts harmless, that it would continue to pay them at least a minimum base funding amount from a state level. Every single school district receives different amounts from the state based on their need. You know, as indicated previously, we are 84% adequately funded as a district. So those districts that are in that 60% to 80% range are receiving more money from the State of Illinois. This is where I'm going to go off on my tangent a little bit, but what the community needs to realize is that we're all property taxpayers too. I don't like our property taxes. The reality is, is that the reason property taxes are so high in Illinois is because Illinois funds public education, one of the worst in the country. That is picked up by local property taxes. That's the reason our property taxes are primarily as high as they are. What you'll also be interested to find out is areas like Waukegan, Rockford, have a much higher tax rate than we do. Is that correct?
That is correct. I'm not 100% familiar with Waukegan, but I know Rockford is significantly higher than ours.
Right. So not only are they being taxed more than us, they're receiving a lot more money from the state. So where my frustration lies in all of this is that the state, if we want our property taxes to go down, the state needs to contribute more into public education to get all districts equally funded or funded to the level where they need to be funded as a district. And so because of that, and because my property values are so high, and primarily, majority of my property taxes goes to schools, to ensure and maintain my property value, I'm happy where we are with the levy because prior to 2017, when we weren't in evidence-based funding, oftentimes, not only was the state not paying districts what they promised they would pay them, they were prorating it. So even though we went and asked for the levy, which sometimes was between 0 and 2%, they would prorate how much they gave us per student based on that calculation at that point. So, you know, I am pleased that, you know, we are staying true to our property taxpayers and keeping our schools formidable and our property values high. And, you know, I'm good moving forward with this. Thanks.
So I know there was a lot of comments on Slide 7, and I'm going to comment on that too. I look at that bottom bullet very simply. It's kind of for the audience. If you were getting paid $100,000 a year and your company told you you're going to get only two paychecks a year, one in the beginning of the year, one in the middle of the year, and then at some point, they came through and said, I want to see how much cash you have, and they took a snapshot the day after you got your first check, not knowing you're going to have to pay for half the year's expenses out of that money. That's exactly what they're doing here with this bullet, right? Approximately.
That's a pretty good analogy. Again, it's different districts, depending on the county, may have, it may not work quite like that, but for us, with when we receive the money, that's pretty accurate, yes.
And our minimum fund balance that we have to have to retain a good status financially is 34%? What is that?
The State of Illinois, to maintain recognition status, it's 25%.
25.
For us, we've traditionally been a little bit higher than that in that low 30s. For us, anything below 18%, that would represent us running out of money and struggling to pay the bills.
So, yeah, can you explain that a bit? That means that something happened and we got cut off, and suddenly, we have to live on our assets that we have, right?
Right. So again, we manage towards the low point, which is traditionally in May, right before that first property tax payment. So we are managing to make sure that we have sufficient liquidity in May, in that April-May period, to make payroll, to make our accounts, our obligations to our vendors, et cetera. So an average payroll for the district is about $12 million. We pay that twice, twice a month, on the 15th and the 30th. So for us, we're really having 25% at June 30th. So, for us, we're really having twenty, having twenty-five percent at June thirtieth would represent us having just enough the month prior to be able to make those, those last couple payrolls before that, that June, first June installment comes in. And if we did dip below twenty-five percent, again, if we got into that seventeen, eighteen percent range, those would start being the numbers where we, we, for lack of a better word, wouldn't, wouldn't be able to make payroll. That's really what we manage towards and, and monitor, to make sure that our fund balances are healthy enough to, to ensure financial stability during that April, April-May period.
So, we're not a district that's keeping a lot of extra cash on the side. We're meeting the requirements to be financially sound in the state of Illinois's terms.
Yeah, yeah. In, in my opinion, we, that's, that's correct.
Okay. And then also, several board members talked about the evidence-based funding, and just to be clear, there's tiers in the state, right? And I know we've talked about this at different board meetings, but I, I think we have to keep repeating these things. So, tier one is the least funded, right?
Correct.
And tier four is the best funded.
Correct.
Least locally funded.
Least locally funded, yes. So, we are a tier-two district.
You're a tier-two district, correct.
And Chicago Public Schools is still tier-one, or?
Chicago Public Schools, right now, is falling right on the border between tier-one and tier-two. So they are kind of swinging the, the tier designation a little bit, that, you know, depending on which way they go, kind of, kind of has some, some ramifications for those districts in that same area. But, in, in general, the state, five out of six years, has put three hundred million new mon, three hundred million of new money into the evidence-based funding formula. Approximately ninety percent of that new money goes to tier-one districts.
And with our eighty-four percent tier-two funding, we are a top-rated district, but if you compare our operating expense per pupil with those that are in the surrounding areas, how would we compare?
Compared with, with similar high-performing unit school districts, we have the lowest operating expense per pupil.
Okay. All right. I think that we also, in the past, so we're dealing with the high CPI, we also have increased transportation expenses pretty significantly due to bus driver shortages and the need to make sure we have bus drivers in place. We also have new, new contracts with our unions, which contribute, what, eighty percent of our budget?
Salaries and benefits combined are about eighty percent, yes.
So, with all of that said, we've given budget presentations in the past, and I also am supportive of this levy. Thank you. Our next presentation is by, excuse me, Dr. Tara Bell, Tara Fowler, Dawn Faulkner, regarding mental health clinics update.
And as they're coming to the table, I'll just start, before Dr. Bell and Ms. Fowler start talking, I just wanna say that as a district, we've always been concerned about the social-emotional growth of our students. Before I started working here, the district started using second-step program and a way to support our students. Due in part of the pandemic, but also for other reasons, including hearing from our students last year, we've been looking for ways to enhance our support to our students and their families. Tonight, you'll hear more about our mental health clinics that will be in place in several of our schools. We have shared in the past information about the grants we have received, but tonight, you'll hear in detail about the clinics and when they will start. We believe that these clinics will support our children and their families as they work to deal with concerns that are impacting their lives.
Good afternoon, Tally. How good evening, board members.
Is that working?
We are here to-
We can't hear you.
About the Indian Prairie-
Yeah.
So, we are here to present about the Indian Prairie- Here to present about the Indian Prairie Cares Grant. This initiative is from the Office of the Superintendent. My name is Tara Bell. I work here at the CEC in the Curriculum Instruction Department. We have here Tara.
Good evening. I'm Tara Fowler. I am the Director of Middle School Core Curriculum. And our colleague Dawn Faulkner, who is the District SCL Coordinator, was unable to join us this evening, but has been instrumental in this work. Today is her birthday, so happy birthday, Dawn. Thank you for all of your help. We are here to provide an update on the initiative known as Indian Prairie Cares. We had a previous board presentation last spring with Deputy Superintendent Akarius, where we discussed grants and the various initiatives, as Dr. Tally mentioned, that our departments have been undertaking to try and secure competitive grant funding. Since that time, we've received approximately one point four million dollars to support mental health here in the district. Again, this is all competitive, so we turn in proposals and hope for the best, and five hundred thousand is the amount that was awarded for this project. The goal of our proposal that we turned in last spring was to secure funding to bring licensed clinicians into schools after hours, so after-school, free therapy sessions for students and families with the greatest need. This directly related to the Edward Elmhurst Community Investment Funds Priority on Health Equity, so it was a nice alignment. Our proposal was funded. We received the largest amount of all grantees through this program, and we were the only school district that was awarded as well. We've spent the last few months researching, consulting, working with District Council, and putting systems and structures in place for successful project management for this grant, and just wanted to, again, thank Dawn for her help. Amit Thaker, who's been very helpful for this work, Amit runs a company referral GPS, and he's also a two oh four graduate, so we're thankful for his contributions, as well as Mr. Joe Dant, who is our Edward Elmhurst mentor. He is the President of the South Shore Hospital for Edward Elmhurst. He's been working with Dr. Tally and our team so that we can ensure that we bring equitable services through this program. Goal of our project is to prioritize health equity, so again, in alignment with the constraints of the grant, our cares clinics will provide free after-school and evening counseling services to students and families onsite at our schools. We're targeting the most underserved populations, and services are going to be provided by external licensed clinicians. We'll also have wellness opportunities through family fun and family engagement events. Those are community-based activities to encourage family bonding and emotional well-being. We're going to also promote community engagement by facilitating mental health get speakers and parent educators. Some of those are bilingual, English and Spanish, so we've got a, a wide array of appealing offerings. And also, we're gonna increase early exposure to mental health careers in schools, a very needed area, by partnering with a local university to provide students with volunteer opportunities. This project aligns with Board Policy six sixty-five and IPSD Strategic Plan Objective Three of Priority One, Strategies one through three. It also aligns with our District Two Oh Four Equity Belief Statement. And the schools that we are targeting for this grant, we have four of the thirty-four schools. They were selected based on the highest number of low-income students, the highest number of McKinney-Vento eligible students, and the highest number of English-language learners. So our four schools targeted for this particular funding source is Fisher, Georgetown, Granger, and Longwood. The goal of the cares clinics is to remove barriers to treatment and increase access to care. So the barriers that our team found when we did some research about access to mental health clinics was removing a financial barrier, so by offering no cost, no-cost sessions to students and families, there's no financial barrier. We're going to remove the transportation barrier by offering these sessions onsite at neighborhood schools, and we're also offering telehealth. We're gonna remove the timing barrier by offering weekend and evening sessions, so all of our sessions are exclusively outside of school hours, in the evenings one day per week, and also on the weekends, and remove scheduling barrier by avoiding the typical waitlist that most private practices in our community have for accessing mental health services. IPSD is contracting with external licensed clinicians to provide these services. You just approved their contracts, thank you. And we'll offer, again, weekly therapy sessions, so in every week for the rest of the school year, seventy-two sessions will be offered across all of our buildings. That's a really high number of care, forty-five-minute sessions, Tuesdays five to eight, Saturdays nine to twelve. Three clinicians will serve each school each day, which is how we arrive at seventy-two. So there'll be plenty of opportunities for students and families to access free care. While this is an initiative of the Office of the Superintendent, we do just wanna point out that we're creating a free after-school resource for students and families. Our district team has engaged in lengthy discussions with District Council on how to, you know, avoid any sort of ethical or legal issue on preparing the contracts, making sure the ethical and legal separation is what it needs to be to mitigate risks to the district. We've also engaged internal stakeholders, including our student services teams. Tara and Dawn Faulkner have done a great job of working with our internal stakeholders related to mental health and student services. The majority of the project management work for this grant will be undertaken by an external project management team, who has relevant expertise in the mental health field in our community. The licensed clinicians providing mental health services, again, are external, so not internal, external from private practices, and we're excited that we do have four confirmed bilingual, English, Spanish therapists to service our schools. And scheduling of appointments and referrals, following up on the referral process, is all, again, external. There's no records internally here in the district, and that will be managed by the project management team.
So, I wanted to go over just a little bit the facilitation process, and then some of the confidentiality safeguards that we've put into place. So, in regards to what Indian Prairie will be doing with this project, first and foremost, referring families to the landing page, which I'm gonna talk about in a subsequent slide, distributing flyers, postcards, information going out through those schools' weekly newsletters, information on our district website. We will have site supervisors who are district employees, I'll talk a little bit more about them later as well, that will be onsite to greet families, help them find their treatment rooms, things of that nature. We also wanna make sure that our staff is equipped, because we know that families absolutely will reach out to schools, so we wanna make sure that they have information to direct families to the appropriate resources. As you all have seen, we have executed the contracts to get the program up and running, and just ensuring, along with our project management team, that we're responsive to families and practices' needs as they arrive in a timely manner. In terms of confidentiality safeguards, we know that that's very important. As Tara mentioned, we will not have, we will not keep or access any records in terms of who is receiving treatment or any type of attendance records. The district will not be responsible for scheduling appointments or taking possession of the referral forms that families fill out. We won't be taking messages for therapists. Instead, we will pass the families along to speak with the therapist in the clinics directly, and we will not be tracking the identity of students and families receiving care, aside from when they physically show up for a therapy session. Our site supervisors, who are district employees, will be there, but they will not be maintaining any written records. Just to go over a little bit our workflow, it's a PDF, that's why it looks a little strange. So, in terms of our workflow, again, the, the majority of the workflow is gonna be managed by our external project management team that has expertise in this area. As I mentioned, we'll have ways that we're marketing sharing information here very soon with families to help them understand how they can get connected with services. Our project management team has, has completed a landing page, so basically a website that's really kind of a one-stop shop for families. It gives them all of the information that they need about the various services that are offered. Probably the most important, important component of the landing page, excuse me, is a counseling refresh, request form. It's a brief form that families can fill out, simply to express interest. From there, a clinic or practice, a clinician or practice will reach out to the families to answer any questions that they have, connect them with services, and schedule and deliver the therapy, and then just do general reporting to our project management team, just so that we know the number of families that are serviced, but again, know details of who those families are. So we have, our project management team has been spending the past month interviewing private practices, community organizations, and a formal application process has been in place to select the providers that will be delivering therapy services. Some of the things that they've been looking for in the selection process are those with adolescent treatment experience. A school setting experience is a, is a huge plus, that they're able to provide consistent staffing, so if I'm receiving therapy on a Tuesday, we want the same therapist to be there every Tuesday, so that we have consistency, that they are able to supervise and deal with any concerns or issues that may arrive during the sessions. As Tara mentioned, we do have a Spanish-speaking therapist. We want them to have the technical capability to be able to handle their own scheduling, reporting, things of that nature, since that's separate from the school district. And then, just having a singular contact, we don't want families, you know, having to contact multiple people to get services, that everything is streamlined. So, in terms of the decision-making for the, that was led by the project management team, we were very excited that we had forty-three applicants for this project, which is amazing. We ended up, or the project management team ended up selecting nine organizations. We already highlighted Spanish-speaking therapists, and then the project management team oversaw licensing, making sure that they have proper background checks and things of that nature. As Tara mentioned, we work with District Council, who put together the contracts and building rental agreements that will be providing the clinicians and practices. The practitioners that are going to be delivering services have a wide range of expertise and credentials everywhere, from psychologists to family therapists, social workers, licensed social workers and counselors, will be delivering therapy services. A few of the logistics, our goal is to start therapy services the week of November twenty-ninth, so that's just around the corner, through June third, so through the duration of the school year, of course, with the exception of any times that holidays or days of the district might be closed. As Tara mentioned, all sites will be available Tuesdays five to eight PM, Saturdays nine AM to twelve PM. As I mentioned previously, we will have IPSD employees serving as site supervisors. Our goal is for two site supervisors per location per day. Those who are serving as site supervisors are predominantly those who are, are employed in student services roles here throughout the district. Their primary goal will be just greeting families, manning the doors, and providing support as needed. And then, as Tara mentioned, we will have telehealth options available. However, the clinicians who are providing telehealth services will be providing them on location, assuming that they'll have some sort of a hybrid therapy schedule. In terms of next steps, obviously, we're here this evening presenting, and thank you for approving the contracts. As I mentioned, here in a few weeks, we're hoping to begin our first counseling sessions. In February, we wanna begin the process of looking to see how we can sustain this project by working with community, community organizations, and just figuring out how can we continue the care and services that are being provided. And then, we're really excited to hear about the final, we're in the final stages of hopefully receiving another grant from IDPH and other partners that will be working on a separate project with Nequa Valley High School to provide similar services. We appreciate your time, and we're available for any questions that you might have.
Ms. Grover?
So, I'm excited about this. I remember when Dr. Tally had mentioned we got the grant, so it's great to see it now being implemented. I just have a few questions. The five hundred thousand grant, is that just for one year, or?
It is, yes. The, all grant recipients from the, this is the inaugural dispersment from the Community Investment Fund at Edward Elmhurst, received a one-year of funding only. So, thinking about how to sustain these over time, as we mentioned, there is another flow coming in to fund a project at Nequa, and then, Dr. Tally, our team, Deputy Superintendent Akarius, we turned in a pretty solid twenty-five-page narrative to a federal grant last Thursday, so of course, we won't know if we'll get funded. We did request five and a half million dollars over five years. Fingers crossed, we'll know by the end of December.
That'll be great, 'cause then we can see it's expanded to the other schools as well. I remember the board presentation about grants and how we get a lot of our stuff through grants. My next question is, do families, do you guys reach out to families, or do families sign up on their own? How does it work?
We want it to work both ways. We wanna make sure that there are multiple points of contact, so our student services teams in our buildings are always supporting families and connecting them with services beyond what we provide at school, so this is just another service that they can provide, so they will have information that they can hand out to families, they can help them directly- they can help them, direct them to that landing page that has been created. But we also know that there may be times, for whatever reason, that families maybe don't want to go through schools, they want it to be confidential, so they can access the information through the landing page without even contacting anyone directly from the schools.
And I just have, the wellness, I think it was on slide three, because I think these sessions, the clinics, are only for the students that are in that school.
Or students that, if they have siblings in one of the feeder buildings. So it really extends truly beyond those four buildings, because it hits all of the feeder, elementary, and high schools for those buildings as well.
Okay. The wellness opportunities that you spoke of on slide three, is that for the whole, just through the family fund, community-based activities, is that also linked to that school, or is that district-wide?
We're still working through the logistics of that. We're hoping for, like, the mental health speakers, we're planning to do some parent cafes. We're hoping that a lot of the events will be open to the whole district. There may be some where we have a limited capacity, but we're hoping to expand those just, you know, beyond those four schools.
So if there are slots open and, say, they don't have enough students in one of the schools for those slots, they can take the siblings from the feeder schools?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Excited about this.
Ms. Dumbing.
Thank you so much. It is, I will echo Board Member Grover, it is extremely exciting, and I as well was very excited when I heard that we received a grant, and now to see it coming. Just, if we, if by chance, we don't have families, enough families, that take advantage at a particular school, but others that, you know, could use services, are we going to be able to, to be able to provide that, or to allow that? How would?
I think that's our plan. I mean, we've kind of said over and over again, we're designing and flying at the same time, trying to figure this out. So we're hoping, you know, that we will have many families that want to access the services, but we definitely want to reexamine periodically, and if we do have sessions open and can offer it up to families in other schools, absolutely. We want, we want to do that. We want to make sure that the services are utilized.
And I just, just very excited. I really, that was the only question that I really had. I am very interested to see when we get to the high school level. I'd be interested to learn a little bit more whether or not that's something that we'll be able to use for all three high schools. I don't know if you have any potential thoughts if we wind up with that grant, whether that would be open for all, just housed out of Niqua, or?
Sure. So the rationale behind the Niqua grant was when we initially announced that we had received funding through this grant source, Dr. Farrar called and said, "I would really love to be a site for this grant. Please, you know, can I host this?" And unfortunately, due to the constraints set forth by the Edward Elmhurst Community Fund in relationship to the health equity and the underserved populations piece, Niqua was not included in that proposal. So we told Dr. Farrar that we would try to find an additional funding source to support Niqua. That grant is a partnership through the Illinois Department of Public Health, connected to a health department. So that's connected to the Will County Health Department. So expanding it beyond Will County is something that we would have to, you know, consult our project officer with at the state. That still is in kind of the underwriting stage, so we don't have a lot of information at this time. Thank you so much.
I will say, though, the grant that Dr. Bell submitted last week does speak to all three high schools.
And the important consideration, too, is that Matia and Wabanzie families would have access immediately through the CARES program to access CARES at one of the, one of the four sites that we've mentioned, since they're feeders. Thank you.
Mr. Rising.
Slide eight, if you could. I'm sorry, slide six. Thank you for explaining that, that, you know, where these efforts are being focused, based on needs of our students, of financial needs primarily. It's also good to know, especially for Fisher and Georgetown, who funnel into Wabanzie, and Grandeur Longwood, that funnel into Matia, that that is also available for those students, although hopefully we get that other grant that can be for all the high schools. Slide, let's see. So you had, on the next slide, slide seven. I'm a little confused, because it, you had seventy-two sessions each week, which to me says seventy-two students per week, but then we only had forty-three initial applicants. Is that, is that correct? Am I, am I getting those numbers right?
Oh, I'm sorry, the forty-two was in reference to community mental health providers. So our project management team did essentially like a call for bids, and we had forty-three local providers indicate they were interested in potentially being clinicians.
Okay, so then back to, I guess, slide seven, where it says seventy-two sessions, is that equal to seventy-two students per week?
It is, yes, potentially. We also are allowing students who need continuation of care to have access up to eight sessions free of charge throughout the school year. So it's seventy-two therapy sessions. It could be a subsection of, you know, students that are perhaps on session two or students that are on session three of an eight, of an eight-session allowance within the fiscal year. But there will be seventy-two weekly sessions offered.
And I guess, other than financial need, outside of that, is it on a first-come-first-served basis? I mean?
Sure. So our, again, our project management team will be handling the referrals, so they'll see the referrals when they come in. They'll reach out to the families, they'll reach out to the practices, they'll match them, and then the practices will contact the families to set up those appointments. So aside from a family indicating on the landing page that they're interested in receiving care, all of the logistics in terms of the appointments will be handled by the practices themselves. So if there's a waiting list, for example, if we get to the point where there's a waiting list, the practices will have access to that, and then they will move through the waiting list with the project management team to ensure that no family is waiting too long for care.
And all of this is approved by the parent, correct? It all goes through the parent?
Absolutely, the parent is the one that makes the request.
All right, that's all I had, thanks.
Ms. Fasdick.
Like my fellow board members, I'm excited to see this come to fruition, and I thank you sincerely for the hard work you've put into doing this, starting with the grant. I'm excited to see, when we, at the beginning of the presentation, talked about, this is kind of packs a powerful triple punch. We're hitting board policy, the strategic plan, and the equity belief statement. So for me, this is, this is a great example of the belief and our priorities in action, finding a way to serve our students even outside of our schools. And so I'm really thrilled to see that happening, and it's a beautiful combination of teamwork, too, with our community, with our providers, who want to help our students out as well, so we have a healthy, vibrant community. So thank you for that.
Mr. Krubus.
Some of you might remember prior board member Kathy Peale, who was a social worker. When I hear this presentation, I know that she would be so happy about it. So I couldn't help but listen to the program and know that something that she was striving for and advocated for has finally come to fruition. So that is, that's awesome. One of the questions that I, you know, pass through any time I see a program or presentation is, doesn't make the students better or worse, and this by far makes the students better. I can appreciate the difficulty on the, making sure all the legal checks were done, making sure it was ethical. You've got mental health issues that are potentially. And I really appreciate, you know, this coming on the back of our levy presentation, where we're talking about having to expend taxpayer money. Well, now we're providing half-million dollars' worth of services that aren't borne by our taxpayers, but are being privately funded. And the ability of private funding to do things that government funding can't. With government funding being restricted, it has to provide equal educational opportunities. We aren't doing these services now, because we are eighty-four percent adequately funded. If we were a hundred percent adequately funded, maybe we can be doing these services at all the schools. So we are able to bring in the private money, and that involves, private money doesn't have to provide equally to all of our schools. They can set their rules, and they chose to have an equity component to it. And it's a start. And so you say, let's, let's, let's do it here? And, and I applaud you for saying that. You didn't say, "Let's, let's not do it, because we can't do it at all the schools, let's try it here." And you're looking for opportunities to do it elsewhere. And when Illinois funds us more, we will then be able to expand the program to all of our schools. One of, you were talking about board policy, six-sixty-five, which deals with social-emotional learning. And I just want to read the first paragraph of that. "Social-emotional learning is defined as the process through which students enhance their ability to integrate thinking, feeling, and behaving to achieve important life tasks. Students competent in SEL are able to recognize and manage their emotions, establish healthy relationships, set positive goals, meet personal and social needs, and make responsible and ethical decisions." This is important, because it is hard to, for example, work on math if you are, can't regulate your behavior, and you get into fights. And you get disciplined, and you can't, and you're not in school. So the, we provide these supports generally, but this is an enhancement of it. So I, I love that and appreciate that. What I would like to see in the future, and I know it was required in the fifty-page grant that you wrote, is when and what would be in a future report? So how do we know we've succeeded? You want to expand on that before I do?
Sure. So that is actually wrapped up in all sorts of federal regulation, because that, of course, we have HIPAA regulations, we have FRIPA regulations. There's all sorts of things we cannot say to anyone about how we can know if these are successful. Again, after, the benefit to the private funds is that we've essentially been given a planning grant, too. So we've been able to allocate a significant portion of this grant to just figuring out how to actually do this right and mitigating risks to the district in doing that. And what we determined with legal counsel is that we can essentially just ask for a head count. So the number of students that accessed the resource, and that's about it. So the federal grant, for example, that we turned in last week, normally for a Department of Education grant, there would be a rigorous evaluation required. There would be, you know, it would have to be mixed method, it would have to be an external evaluator. But again, because of the regulations related to confidentiality, that, that measure was just the number of students that attend.
I can appreciate the usage as being a good matrix. There might be some other, more tangentially related ones, like student behavior, student discipline, academic achievement, that we could, although causality might be an issue, but if we, if we implement this program and bad behavior goes down, you know, maybe that helps us.
As long as we don't know the identity of the students receiving the services. It would have to be in aggregate. In aggregate, yeah, in aggregate.
Because that person might be impacting some other person. So I think there's, you know, there's tangents in there, but, and whatever measurables you come up with, you know, I look forward to that future report and hearing about the success of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jane.
My fellow board members did a great job asking all of my questions. I just, I want to congratulate you on writing such a stellar application that, in that we were the only school district and we received the highest amount. I mean, if I could give a standing ovation for that, I think, as Board Member Krubus just stated, after hearing about our financial limitations, this is all due to your love for the students. And it is, it is, it speaks, it's a testament to, to our district and our staff, administrators, teachers that work here, is what this is. It's kind of a dream come true type of it. It's on our, it's on our dream list. Like, do you know of any district that provides such services? Do we, are we aware of that? Does that happen in Illinois?
I mean, not on this scale. So, I mean, so there really wasn't anyone for us to reach out to. I know other districts, like we do, partner with U-360 Services, but not, not really on this scale.
On outside, yeah, outside of school is, so creating this resource to serve students outside of school is relatively unique. We are aware of a program affiliated with St. Charles School District that does provide external counseling in some capacity, but it's not, it's not as extensive as ours, and it's not after-school hours. And I believe one of the other grantees, they received about half the amount, as we did, from this proposal, this call, was the 203 Foundation. And I believe with their funding, they are hiring someone very similar to, in a similar role as John Forkner, so an SEL-type coordinator, to work with students. I believe that's what they mentioned at one of the meetings they'd be doing.
Yeah, it's just, it's extraordinary, and I had the same question, Board Member Krubus, is, are there, is there any way we can measure this and kind of know what type of magic might be happening here? But I, I understand all the confidential limitations that, that are involved here. The other question I wanted to just confirm is, so let's say a middle schooler would want to seek these services without the help of their parents, they would not be able to. Like, they would need a guardian to, to put in the form or application to seek these services.
Absolutely. And again, we will not, as district employees, see any of those referral forms. They'll be routed exclusively, again, for HIPAA protocol purposes, to our experienced referral team. So they'll vet all of those to ensure that consent is obtained.
Great, thank you so much.
And practices will also ensure consent is obtained before their therapist sees them.
That's, that's great, thank you. No, no other questions.
So as the full board shared, outstanding work and effort to get this and really supports our, our families with great, no-cost services onsite, after-school, and weekend. It's like, that is just incredible to be able to offer that for our students. And, you know, I wish I could, we could do it everywhere, but this is a great start. I was surprised that you had forty-three different groups respond to possibly offer services, because I keep hearing that whenever someone needs mental health counseling, that there are like huge waitlists to get in to see them. So how do you account for that?
Sure. So there is a large waitlist. Part of it was in the simplification of the process. So we are requiring, through our contracts to the providers, to not collect any insurance information. Since insurance is not involved, the amount of work that is needed for intake is slightly reduced on the practice side. Second of all, the feedback we got from our contractor related to having meetings with the practices, with that, they just really liked the idea. It was something new and different, and provided them with an opportunity to have direct access to students, which was a bit of a different venue than the normal route to receiving care. And then we also offered a very competitive rate. So compared to insurance reimbursement, with private money, we were able to with private money, we were able to offer roughly twenty-five to thirty percent above the average rate for an hour of therapy, for a therapy session, which we're, again, taking into consideration travel. So they have to come to our buildings. They have to do, of course, all of the charting that's required within their practice. So by offering a premium essentially with this private funding, we, we had a lot of interest.
Just an added thing, we originally had planned to have one company serve one school. Unfortunately, yes, we had forty-three apply, but unfortunately, we weren't able to do the one company. One of our companies had originally said to us, we'll do two of your schools. And ended up, they're only able to serve, send us one therapist total. So yes, we had forty-three apply, but we're still stretched out across all of the, of the schools.
The middle schools will be staffed exclusively by one practice each. That will simplify things at the middle school level.
Well, it's a great service to offer to the families and I hope the families take you up on filling these appointments. Not that I wish any need on anyone's part, but I do think there's a lot of students out there and families that will really benefit from this kind of support. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is from Charles Spandell regarding the two thousand and twenty-two school report card.
As they're coming to the table, Board of Ed members, we will resume tonight sharing information about the Illinois Report Card data about our district and our schools. The report card was suspended during the pandemic by the state. We know that everyone across the country has been talking about student achievement as a result of the pandemic. We have been examining our data and trying to determine how quickly our students will bounce back with their results. We believe due in part to what our teachers do every day and due to the resilience of our children, that we will see a quick bounce back. No one can be sure, but some of our data reflects that bounce has already happened. Though we are, there are positive signs with our data, we also know there is space for improvement. You will hear some of the things we have put in place to support students who are having academic struggles. Please know that when, what we are talking about tonight is not an exhaustive list. And also know that we continue to examine ways to support our students and ensure that they are actively engaged in the process. I'll turn the over, meeting over to Mr. Charles Spandell, Executive Director of Assessment, Research, and Evaluation. And he has Mr. Akarius, our Deputy Superintendent, as well.
Thank you, Dr. Tally, and thanks to the board for this chance to talk to you and the community about academic achievement in District Two Oh Four. Three main purposes tonight. First, to share with you some of the data from the school report card that comes through the state that was released on October twenty-seventh. But then secondly, to share with you some internal measures that we monitor historically in the district. And finally, to describe how we've been using this data all along to respond to what we've been seeing over the past couple of years. And this presentation addresses Strategic Plan Priority One, as well as the three board policies listed on the slide, which are mostly concerned with accountability and student assessment. We are going to start things off by looking at building-level summative designations. So ISB each year assigns a designation to each school building, but not to districts overall, from exemplary down to comprehensive support. So this is actually the first year that that's been done since eighteen nineteen due to ISB not having the data they needed to be able to calculate those designations. Since we have not done this for a couple of years, I thought it would be useful to dedicate a few slides to kind of reviewing how ISB actually comes up with those designations. It's a little bit different at the elementary, middle school level than the high school level, so we'll start with our K-eight buildings. ISB, for the seventeen eighteen school year, completely changed how they did school accountability to a system that shifted from just looking at proficiency to looking at several different measures. And you can see in this at the elementary and middle school level, growth in math and ELA are the two main drivers of those designations. And that's determined by growth on the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, or IAR, that elementary and middle school students take each spring. Chronic absenteeism is the second-largest measure. And then we also see proficiency measures, as well as science and climate survey participation and EL progress. Shifting to the high school level. ISB does not have a growth measure that they can use at the high school level. So instead of those two growth measures, they use graduation rate as the primary driver of high school designations. We still see chronic absenteeism as the second-highest. And then similar to elementary and middle school, the two proficiencies, as well as climate, survey, and science participation. And additionally, at the high school, we see ninth grade on track as a measure of building success. So the way this works is in three steps. First of all, for each slice of that pie, ISB has the raw data, so they know that a building's graduation rate was ninety-seven percent, or their chronic absenteeism rate was seventeen percent. They take that raw data and translate it into a score between one and a hun, or zero and a hundred. And each slice of that pie has a different methodology that they use to do that. So for example, graduation rate, anything above ninety-three percent is assigned a score of a hundred. Anything below sixty-seven percent is assigned a score of zero, and then everything in between is prorated. So there's a different methodology for each slice of that pie to translate the raw data into a score between zero and a hundred. Then they use the weightings you saw in that pie chart to come up with an overall score for each building. And then they take those scores for buildings across the state and compare them to each other. So the way that works, and I know the numbers are small on the right-hand side. But basically, if we think of the high schools, if we assume there are about six hundred and fifty high schools in the state of Illinois, once they've assigned that overall score, they basically line them up from highest score to lowest score. And if there's six hundred and fifty high schools, the sixty-fifth high school is the one that determines the cut score between commendable and exemplary because the top ten percent are in the exemplary range. They use a similar process with the bottom five percent to identify the cut scores that identify schools for one of the support categories. So looking at how that's played out in Indian Prairie. The first year that ISB used this process, Indian Prairie had six schools in the exemplary category and twenty-five in the commendable. The next year in eighteen nineteen, the number of exemplary schools increased to eleven. Then, as we mentioned, there were two years that these were not assigned. And then last year, we increased again to fifteen schools in the exemplary category when you calculate their scores and compare them to schools across the state. All right, moving from building level to some district-level numbers and looking at those proficiency measures. At the elementary and middle school level, ISB measures proficiency using the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. As you look at this graph, and I'll talk about the assessment itself a little bit more, but just to orient you, the two bars at the left are for Indian Prairie, and we're going to compare data from last year to data from eighteen nineteen, which is the most recent set of data pre-pandemic. And then the right-hand side, we have the similar set of measures for the state. Now, anytime I talk about IAR results, it's important to provide some context of what that assessment is. IAR is designed as a comprehensive assessment of students' mastery across the breadth and depth of the Illinois learning standards. Illinois takes the scores that each student achieves and categorizes them in one of five achievement levels, from level one being the level lowest to level five being the highest. One of the things that it's important to realize is that Illinois has set a very high benchmark to achieve that level four and level five designation. So even though the labels that are put on those often are meet standards and exceed standards, we need to realize that to be in that level four and five, students are having to show or demonstrate a comprehensive mastery across the grade-level standards. So students in the yellow, even though ISB would label them as approaching, what those students that are in that yellow band are showing is they're showing mastery of some, but not all of those grade-level standards. Those students are actually typically scoring between the fortieth and sixtieth percentile. So that is the average range for that grade level. Illinois has chosen to set a high bar. They're actually one of the five hardest states in the country for a student to demonstrate proficiency. Many, if not most, of those students in the yellow, if they were growing up in Iowa or Ohio or Pennsylvania, would be in the green. And they would be counted as having met standards in those states. So a little bit of context that is important to understand about IAR, how it's graded so that you can interpret these results correctly. Now, switching back to how ISB, though, reports these, they typically report the total percentage of students at levels four and five. So that's the number at the top of each bar. If we look at the changes between eighteen nineteen and the twenty-one twenty-two school year in Indian Prairie, moving from fifty-eight point four percent of students in those two highest levels of achievement to forty-eight point nine represents a nine point five point drop. Now, there's a couple of ways to look at that. One is just what is that raw change in score? The other is what's the proportional change? And that's the other number that's reported on, just above the arrow. Moving from fifty-eight point four to forty-eight point nine represents sixteen percent fewer students in those two highest achievement levels. Now, if we compare that to the state, we see the state actually had a lower point drop. But because they started with a significantly smaller number of students in those levels, that's actually a higher proportional drop. All right, shifting to math, at the elementary and middle school level, we see a similar pattern in that, in Indian Prairie, a seven point two point drop, about a point lower than that across the state. But again, because of the number of students that were in those categories, it's a higher proportional drop statewide than what we saw in Indian Prairie. Shifting to the high school, the SAT is the state accountability assessment that all of our juniors take in the spring. This data is for the EBRW section, which is the evidence-based reading and writing section, which is the part of the SAT that measures English Language Arts Achievement. Here, a little bit different pattern. In Indian Prairie versus the state, we see the state has a higher drop, both in terms of raw points, but also in terms of the proportion of students. And then shifting to math on the SAT, we see a similar, higher point drop across the state, as well as a higher proportional drop. And in all of those cases, we're maintaining a significantly higher proportion of our students in those two highest achievement levels across all levels and subjects. There are many, many different data points reported on the report cards. So a couple of others that are significant that we actually did not see changes in are on this next slide. Graduation rate or dropout rate, ninth-grade students on track, or eighth-grade students passing algebra, as well as the two growth measures for IAR. While you'll see some of them go, moving up or down a few points, none of those are statistically significant changes. So for all intents and purposes, we had the same performance currently versus pre-pandemic in these areas. Now, there were several measures where we did see significant changes, and we want to highlight those because they are kind of part of the entire story around student achievement. One is student mobility. Mobility is ISB's measure of what percentage of your students either entered the district late or left the district early, or a combination of both. They came in and they stayed for a couple of months and then they left. We have typically followed the state pattern of student mobility, but been about a point or so lower. What we see is last year, both the state and Indian Prairie saw a spike in mobility, but ours spiked more sharply than the state, to the point where we have a very similar student mobility rate as the state average. We also saw a significant increase in the student chronic absenteeism rate. The state defines this as the percent of students that missed ten percent or more of the school days during the year. So that is the equivalent of them missing a day every other week. Now, it's important to realize for this measure, when students were quarantined last year, they participated in remote instruction and were not counted absent during that time. So those COVID quarantine days are not included. This is student absences for reasons other than quarantine. And that contrast with the other attendance rate we'll look at, which is teacher attendance, ISB kind of takes the inverted approach to this. They measure this as the percent of teachers that had fewer than ten absences during the year. We saw that drop significant. We have typically had high teacher attendance rates, higher than state in our comp districts. Last year, that declined significantly. Now, the important difference between this and the student attendance is that COVID-related absences are included in teacher attendance. So if a teacher was quarantined, those absences counted toward this. They could not teach remotely the same way that students could participate remotely. We believe that most of that difference is due to COVID-related absences, whether it was a teacher being quarantined or a family member being quarantined and them having to be home as a caretaker. Brand-new on the report card this year, and this is a district measure only, not for schools, is the Equity Continuum. ISB has been working on this for a couple of years. And it represents their effort to quantify a district's position and progress toward equity in the district. And what they end up doing is placing you in one of four steps on the continuum at the bottom, from step one, where you're showing large gaps in equity, to step four, where you're showing minimal gaps in equity. And they do that in three areas, in student learning, in learning condition, and in elevating educators. And we'll take a little bit closer look at each one of those. In student learning, they are looking at what you would expect, mostly assessment data and other measures of student achievement in the district. And this operates much like the report card designations, where each one of those has a methodology where they translate the raw data into a step on that Equity Continuum. And then they put all of these pieces together to give you an overall step on the continuum. In student learning, they placed District Two Oh Four in Step Three, which indicates small gaps, but kind of right on that borderline with Step Two, where that would be more moderate gaps. Under learning conditions, here, they're looking at discipline data, they're looking at funding, and they're also looking at several aspects of the climate survey, both participation and the ratings that were provided by students, parents, and teachers. In this area, we landed more toward the middle of Step Three, indicating small gaps in the district. And then finally, elevating educators is more looking at demographics. So the match between student, teacher, and administrative demographics, as well as how teachers are assigned to different student groups within the districts. And in this area, we were in Step Four, which is minimal gaps. Now, I said ISB's been working on this for a couple of years. We only recently got, very recently, got any information on how they actually calculated this and what it means. So we are still in the process of dissecting that, working with the district equity leaders on what role this might play in the district to help us gauge our progress as we do our equity work. All right, I'm going to shift away from report card to other measures that we have traditionally looked at in the district. And we're going to go back to the SAT, and this is the same SAT data that we looked at earlier, only now, instead of looking at ISB's designations, we're looking at average scores across all of our student groups. For this graph and many of the ones that follow, we use the same notations. Where you're seeing lighter bars or the bars with the crosshatches, that means that there's no statistical difference between the two years. So even though you may see a slight increase or decrease in the scores, statistically, there's not a difference between the two. So in the area of English Language Arts, comparing average scores for those student groups between eighteen nineteen school year and twenty-one twenty-two, we actually did not see a statistically significant group difference for all students. And only one student group actually showed a difference. In the area of math, it looks a little bit different. Several of our student groups showed a significant difference, and it was always a drop. And that shows up in the all-student group as well. And that is consistent with what we've seen in other measures, as well as what we're seeing reported nationally related to student achievement, is that the last couple of years have had a more significant impact on math achievement than we have seen in the area of reading. In the past, we've looked at this measure, students with post-secondary experience. And this is where we look at all of our graduates from each graduating class and what percentage of them at some point during their high school career took advantage of either an AP class, a dual-credit class, or earned an industry credential. And again, we can see for most of our student groups, there was no significant difference in the last two graduating classes. And we remain very close to, we previously had a goal of this being ninety-two percent. We were just below that for the all-students group. We've also typically in the past reported out on AP data. These three measures are the ones that College Board typically publishes. The total number of tests taken, the number of students that took tests, and then the number of students that got a three on at least one of the tests that they took. So what we've seen over the past couple of years is we did see a drop in AP participation, at least in terms of taking the tests. The number of students went down and the number of tests went down. That has quickly, though, rebounded with last year's AP students, to the point where we actually had more students taking more tests last year than we ever had before. We also typically look at that pass as not just the number of students that got a three or higher, but looking at all of the tests, what percentage of them ended up with the student earning a three or higher. We have always been pretty steady in the eighty-two eighty-three percent range. We did see that drop significantly in twenty twenty-one, but has rebounded almost to the point where we're back where we were in previous years. All right, for this last part, much of what we just looked at were related to previous district goals. With the strategic plan that the board recently approved, there are several evidences of success. And the data we have now actually relates to one of those, so we'll look at that. And that is that students will meet and exceed standards at a higher rate than their peers across the state. And we saw at the very beginning of the preseason station that the all-students group, or students collectively, did that. If we look at that data split across all of our student groups, and again, this is the same data that we looked at at the very beginning, where we had the five different levels for IAR. Now it's just looking at the percent of students in those top two performance levels across all of our groups. And we can see at the elementary, middle school level in ELA that we did meet that goal. All of our student groups surpassed the performance of their state peers. Looking at math, we see the same thing. All of our student groups outperforming their peers, some significantly more than their peers across the state. Switching to the high school level in the area of English Language Arts, again, we see all of our student groups except for our EL students exceeding the performance of state peers. For EL students, that number typically is in about the seven percent range. But last year, actually, none of our EL students scored in those two highest achievement levels. Looking at math, again, we're back to all of those student groups significantly outperforming their peers across the state. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Karius to talk about what the district has been doing in response to this, as well as other data we've been looking at over the last couple of years.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss how we are and what we've been doing to respond. When the seriousness of the pandemic was announced in March of two thousand twenty and we were informed of possible measures that were going to take place, we knew we were entering uncharted territory in the field of education. While we do not view students as test scores, we were concerned about what things were going to look like because learning was going to look different. We also knew that every school district was going to face their own unique challenges. We are thankful to our students, our parents, and our district staff as we do feel like we are experiencing more levels of success this year, as this year has felt much more normal than the last couple of years have. Most of the supports and enhancements you see on this page have been discussed extensively through board presentations. We've been very clear and upfront about all the things we're trying to do to continue with engagement and support learning with our students. So I do apologize if any of the things do seem redundant. And as Dr. Tally said, this is not an exhaustive list. On the left, you'll see there are things just through grant funding. You know about our summer boost. We've been doing that two years now, looking at both our elementary and middle school and identifying students to get supports in the summer, as well as our summer bridge. We've also used funding, and this is the federal funding, to try to help us at least slightly reduce class sizes at K through two. We've also have three additional competitive grants. Our Twenty-First Century Grant, our Cures Grant, and our Freedom Schools Grant, which is helping us to provide after-school programming, as well as additional summer programming beyond the summer boost and summer bridge. We've also used the federal funding, the American Rescue Plan funding. You might recall that the last two years, we've sent reading materials home across K through five. I think we did about five books the first year. We increased that last year. But last year, what we also did, seeing that math was becoming a little bit more of a, where we are looking at, wanting to see a better rebound there, we also sent math resources home as well last summer. We also purchased a new assessment, iReady. This is an assessment that we take three times throughout the year that gives us a lot more, I guess, real-time information versus waiting for IAR tests. As you know, it's November and we're talking about a test that was taken last spring. And so the iReady assessment can give us a little bit more real-time information about math and reading performance at the kindergarten through eighth grade level. This is actually the first year that we'll have it throughout the entire year. We implemented it midway through last year. And then we also hired coordinators in math literacy and social-emotional learning and wellness as we look at the whole child and how important that is when we look at student learning. Additional things we've done is we started a STEM camp last year. We'll be doing that again this year. We're doing much more STEM integration across the district. We're increasing even additional club opportunities and extracurricular opportunities related to that. But curriculum review is a huge thing. That's part of our strategic plan. And we've been very excited to really get back into a review cycle. This year in September, Joan Peterson, our Director of Elementary Core Curriculum, met with forty elementary teachers to start talking about and looking at our ELA and, you know, how we're meeting the needs, where those gaps are. It's been a long time since we looked at ELA. That's a big task to look at English Language Arts, as well as when you look at writing involved in that as well, and what that's going to look like over the next several years and what we need to address there. We're doing the same thing at middle school. Tara Fowler, our Director of Core Curriculum for Middle School, she's met with groups of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers from all of our middle schools to also look at what we can be doing with ELA. On top of that, we've also been looking at social studies at our high school level. We had a lot of legislative mandates that we needed to incorporate as well. And so we're looking at how that's going to be done through social studies and what's getting implemented there. We've also been, we went back, when you see some of the instructional resources there. When we first had implemented Eureka Training, we really didn't provide all the manipulatives. We didn't have a lot of the funds to do that. We're also going back and doing a three-day training for all of our staff as well to shore up our instruction in that area. One of the things you don't list it on here is, you know, we started to revisit and go back to our multi-tiered systems of support, looking at our MTSS process and what we can do to be consistent across our schools. And we started working through a manual that all of our districts would have to refer to. But we're also looking at what interventions can we have to support that process? What students are not finding success with our, in our tier one and need additional support? So we're also looking at those opportunities. We've been providing and offering a lot of professional learning just to support good, solid instruction in the classroom. As you know, in the previous years, a lot of that was centered around technology and how we can deliver some instruction, you know, remotely or in-person and remotely. And a lot of, you know, different type of professional learning. And now, you know, bringing that back to a lot of good, solid instruction. Also, school improvement plans, this is what our buildings do. They look at, you know, they look at whatever data is going to be, you know, that stands out to them. They'll work with their instructional leadership teams. It might be five essentials data. It could be behavior data. It could be IAR. It could be some things that they notice on some other kind of assessments that they're using. And they develop plans on how they're going to seek improvements in their building. It's a very collaborative effort. We're also, you saw on there, chronic absenteeism. So we're relooking at, too, attendance expectations. It's been difficult when we've been really advocating, you know, if you're experiencing this, stay home. But we need people in school at the same time. And so we're really trying to dig a little bit more about on-attendance and wanting students to be present and engaged and wanting them to want to be at school. We're also looking at, you know, encouraging students as much as possible for extracurricular activities. And what are those additional things they can participate in? Or where can we add, where are we finding that we need more opportunities for students? And once again, we so appreciate, you see so many things on here, that our teachers have come in over the summers to support our summer learning and additional extracurricular after-school opportunities or before-school opportunities. And we're so appreciative of all their efforts in supporting this process. We've also tried some pilot programs at Granger. They're currently trying, the Granger Academy, to support some students who've had some different challenges with success at school and looking at those opportunities. As well as, we're trying something at Gale-McKenzie to help students stay in school when they've experienced maybe some behavior challenges or things that, but we want to continue that education and provide different opportunities for them. So we are, you know, trying to, trying other new things at the same time. As I said, this is not an exhaustive list, but it does, we do want you to be aware of the things that we have been doing along the way, knowing that learning was going to look a little different for a while there. And then what we continue to do to try to meet the needs of all of our students. Once again, just a reminder, and it's interesting, you look at the portrait of a graduate with flexibility, adaptability, and resilience and creativity. And those are things measured really on IAR. But we know it's something we continue to encourage. It is part of our strategic plan, again, looking at our learning framework and how that connects to our students throughout the district. And with that, I think we are available for any questions.
Ms. Jane.
Thank you for today's presentation. I'm just going to start off with a broader question. For those who may be watching or hearing about the report card for the first time, could you just tell us what the significance of the report card is? And maybe what are some of the limitations of this report card?
So the significance, basically, a school report card is ISB's way of publicly communicating various aspects about schools. There are, you know, we concentrate on student achievement today, but there's finance, there's attendance, there's demographics. There are a myriad of different measures that are reported. So it's ISB's effort at transparency. Honestly, the school designations piece of it, ISB has a responsibility from the federal government to identify the schools in the state that are most at need of support. So that is those, the targeted and comprehensive support categories. Because then they end up getting extra support, but also having, for lack of a better word, hoops that they have to jump through, things that they have to plan for and do to try to climb out of those categories. ISB is actually not required to identify the top piece. And there has actually been some push from some of my colleagues asking them to stop doing that. Because again, part of it, part of the issue with the report card is that there is no benchmark, that this is the score you need to get to be an exemplary school. It's you have to be in the top ten percent. So it's not a this is where we all need to get, it's just I need to be better than enough of you to get into that top ten percent. So if somebody else becomes, like, we've added exemplary schools, that means other districts have lost them. Because there's a set number of buildings in the state that can be in that category.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation. While I appreciate the data, this report card and summary of certain aspects of our district, I also know there's several sections like athletics and the arts that are not anywhere shown in this and a big part of our district. So hence the question about that. If we could go to, let me see, what number, what slide that is? The elementary and middle school ELA, slide nine? And also, just comparing nine and ten, just the general trajectory being lower, do we have an explanation of why we are seeing that at the state level and also in our district?
So I think there are multiple aspects to that. One is part of why we looked at the mobility and the attendance. You know, there's certainly a link between student attendance and achievement. And if more students are absent more often, then that's likely to have an impact on achievement. Mobility is also going to have an impact on that number. We know from lots of historical data that the longer students are with us, the better they do. So when that mobility rate increases, we have more new students coming in. Which again, I am always speaking in generalities and averages for group. Every new student that comes to us isn't performing lower. We have a lot of really high-performing students that move into the district. But on average, students that move in perform lower than students that have been here for a while. So that mobility is also going to impact that. Also, just everything that has happened in the last two years, there's almost no aspect of any of our lives that hasn't been impacted. So I think it would be a little naive to think that students would achieve and be doing just as well as they've always done with everything that's been happening in the last two years.
Thank you. And my last question, I know we had a comparative bar graph between our district and some of the comparable districts for middle school and high school. Do we have something like that for elementary?
What we've typically done in the past is we'll take this report card data and we give the board a comparative district report in the next month or so. We've always done that at the district level rather than an individual building level.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mr. Rising.
Slide nine, if you can. So first and foremost, I'm going to ask you to confirm something again. That proficiency does not equal grade level. Is that correct?
Yes, and that's part of why, you know, the state- Yes, and that's part of why, you know, the state, what the results here represent is a continuum of achievement levels, from level one, which is lower, to level five, which is higher. The state draws lines in places and then puts labels on those lines. They have, in the past, I think, made some unfortunate decisions in the terminology they apply, because those terms carry with them a certain connotation. So, example, level four, they label that as meet standards. I think most people see meeting standards as, at the bottom of that, you're kinda just getting by. And that's not the reality of how students in that level are achieving, they're showing a comprehensive mastery of standards across the standards for that grade level. You know, again, yellow being labeled approaching standards does not mean that those students are performing below grade level, they're actually performing at the average for students across the state at that grade level. They're showing they've mastered some, but they're not showing a complete mastery of all standards.
Yeah, it's, it's a shame, because I think when these came out, there was a lot of rhetoric that proficiency meant grade level, and that is something that people that don't understand how this is evaluated and measured is saying, but that's not at all the case, and I think you had even brought up that if you look at our 21, 22 results, that proficiency in many other states would be the bottom of the, the yellow, of how other states measure it, and we have one of the highest testing rigor of any, of majority of the states in the country.
Right, yeah, and there's two pieces to that, one is the rigor of the test, which IAR is, is actually, at this point, a well-proven test and, and a rigorous measure of mastery of those standards. But then you're also drawing lines somewhere. And states may have equally rigorous tasks and then decide to draw the line in a different place. Illinois has decided to draw the line very high and set a high standard for being labeled as meeting standards, which again, there's, there's nothing wrong, and it's actually good to have a high bar to reach, but you have to understand what that actually means to interpret it correctly.
So, I'm just gonna make some, a couple of statements. Before Illinois changed this, the way they measure things, it was the year 2014. In 2015, they went to this new measurement standard primarily because of a new assessment that they did at the state level. But prior to 2015, I just want our community to know that in the old way that they measured things, for third through eighth, approximately 82.2% of our students were at that meet and exceeds level. So, basically, we had over 80% of our kids that were meet and exceeds, and now it's showing 48%, and it's just a different way of measuring our students. So, I just wanted to mention that. If you go to slide 10, oh wait, actually, stand nine. Really quick, just the difference between us and the state, we're at 62% higher than the state average. Thanks for those numbers, by the way, Charles. Slide 10, we are 90, no, I'm sorry, 93% higher than the state average, we're at 49%, state average is 25%. Slide 11, we're at 95% higher than the state average. And I also wanted to bring up something regarding the 11th grade measurement. Did, did they previously measure it in 11th grade in 2014 to the ACT? Or was it just?
So, it was before, before PARC, it was ACT, or it was actually PSAE, which ACT was a, a major component of. Then, for two years, they used the PARC assessment at the high school level before switching to SAT.
Okay, 'cause I, I looked back at our 2015 number in the new model, and in 2015, we were at 56% proficiency, we're actually at 58% in 2021. So, we're actually higher than we were when they first went to this model. And in math, in math, the next one, which were 102% higher than the state average, we were at about the same level that we were in 2015, so, and that's with the pandemic and everything else and the learning loss that we saw. So, I'll, I'll ask more specific questions now. So, the way I saw our 11th grade measurements, and thank you, Mr. Krugus, for tweeting this, and I hope I'm not stealing your thunder, but in, I believe it was reading, at 11, or I'm sorry, in math, in 11th grade, we are one of the top 10 districts in the state, and in reading, we are the top 11th district in the state for proficiency. So, my question around that is, for you, Charles, is we're a unit district, and I know this is based on proficiency, but can you just speak for a second on how growth works from when the kids are younger to the high-achieving district and high-achieving proficiency numbers that we're seeing by the time they get to 11th grade?
Sure, so, we're in this weird spot right now where we don't have consistent assessment data for, for the past several years. But previous to this, we did have some consistent measures over a long period of time. And what we saw in those measures, as we track students throughout the system, was that when kindergarten classes come into the district, they're typically performing at a slightly above national average level, so 55th percentile, somewhere in that range. Again, as a whole group. Each year that they're with us, they tended to get a little bit farther ahead. So, going back to those growth percentiles you saw, you know, we were at 56, 57, that means our students are growing faster than the national average, which means that every year, they get a little bit farther ahead than the, the nation as a whole. So, what we had seen in previous year's data was kindergarten classes coming in slightly above average. By the time they hit eighth grade, our average national percentiles were around the 70th percentile, so, well above the national average. And again, that's just because of that growth rate, as long as we're growing students faster, you know, it's like two people driving on the highway, and if I'm driving 55 and you're driving 60, you know, every minute that we continue to drive, you get a little bit farther and a little bit farther and a little bit farther ahead. And that's what we've traditionally seen, and that's part of why some of what you see in these results, that once students get to that high school level, especially ones that have been with us since elementary school, are performing very highly.
And then, just a couple of guesses or no questions. We have to test all students, including students with IEP and our English language learner students, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do private schools have to test? Do they have to take this IAR test?
Private schools do not, no.
Okay, and do, private schools don't have to report on proficiency either, do they?
No.
Okay, all right, that's all I had, thanks.
Ms. Dumbing.
Thank you, thanks for providing this and going over through it in such detail. I only had just have a, a couple of areas that, that I just wanted to comment on, and specifically, just looking at, you know, some of you, and you just alluded to our students coming in and, and being, you know, even at the kindergarten level and being above, and each year of growth, and I, I love that, and it speaks to the educational process that, that our educators, educators are able to provide. And I continue to, we, we talk about some of our specific demographics, and I just, I would like to, as we go forward, you know, I'm always interested to know how we help some of our areas where we, we see comparisons, yes, to national or to state, and, and we're higher, but overall, at the district level, we're just, we, we still see those gaps. So, as we move forward, just always continuing to be interested in how we're supporting our African-American and Hispanic populations and demographics to, to see those move up. And then, on the, can you chat a little bit further on those three slides? 17, let's see, 18, 19, and 20, I guess it began at 16. But the, the equity continuum, how does IASB, how did they, how do they come up with those measurements? Because I, I definitely know we have a focus, and we're, you know, we, we are, we're concerned, I'm just wondering how we wind up in those areas, if you have any idea?
So, like I said, ISB's been working on this for a couple of years, they actually, they looked at a lot of the research around equity, they actually looked at some other states that have implemented similar kinds of measures. And, and this is their, I think, first attempt at doing something that, that honestly is very difficult, which is to quantify equity work. I mean, it's, it's one thing to take a one snapshot of, of one assessment or one demographic and say, okay, there's a difference here, there's a gap here, but it's, it's a whole nother thing to quantify that, and then place it on some kind of a scale of here's, you know, you're, you're getting better or you're getting worse. So, again, that's why I say, you know, we're still in the process of dissecting this and really looking at the methodology they use to set those scores and determine how it's gonna be useful to us. So, I, I, while I applaud their, their attempt at doing this, I, I don't know that we're at a point yet internally where we can say this is something we really wanna wrap our heads around and, and use as a measure in this district for our equity work.
That's definitely fair. And then, the, the slide 31, just the, the supports and enhancements, you know, we've talked about some of those, a variety of, a variety of times, but extremely appreciative of the focuses that we have, and some of the areas, and I know that we're, I would love to see, as we move forward, you know, additional information on hopefully, maybe grants and things that can provide additional focuses in some of our Title I areas, you know, and STEM integration, and just really focusing in those areas, and maybe potentially additional products, programs for those schools that have not been historically as participatory.
Yeah, we're definitely gonna provide to the board an update on some of the grant works and some of the competitive grant works, and some of the community partnerships we've been doing with that. We, we have had some challenges with the state on, on those funding opportunities, just how, you know, we were under the impression that they'd be three-year grants, and now, all of a sudden, they might not be three-year grants, and so, we're trying to see, and, and we're always looking at sustainability in how we can support all learners, and so, we're definitely facing some challenges in that area, but we know that, you know, our buildings, our staff, they're all in, and we're, we're trying to figure out, you know, how we can continue and, you know, what impact that is having. So, sorry, Dr. Tally.
And I just wanna add, you know, two of our schools, Georgetown Longwood, are currently in a grant program that we have received specifically due to their current free and reduced meal numbers in those buildings, and so, that's really been very helpful for us.
Yeah. You, if you guys remember with the 21st Century Grant, you had to be over 40% low-income to qualify for that, and that is $300,000 a year we're getting, $150,000 per school, that we're providing a lot of after and before-school programming, as well as our summer programming, and much of that around STEM-related type of activities, or I should say STEAM. Our art offering is pretty popular as well with the local artists and everything, so, we're, we're very excited about those opportunities. It's been hard to gauge that with, with the pandemic over, I mean, we can gauge participation's been outstanding, it's great. If you've had an opportunity, I know I'm gonna be a guest builder again, coming up here pretty soon at our Lego, Family Lego Nights, but it's amazing to see entire families jumping on there to be a part of that, which is one of the reasons we've actually kept those as a remote opportunity, because it, it does tend to be a whole-family experience, which has been great, so.
Thank you for that identification, I really appreciate it, nice, nice presentation, thank you.
Ms. Fazdak.
I just wanna make sure I'm understanding correctly, on slide eight, if I give you a summary, just tell me if I, if I have it right or not. So, from 2017 on, the years that we've been able to measure, we've had 31 of our 34 schools either receiving exemplary or commendable status, which means no underperforming student groups.
Correct.
Since 2017, no underperforming student groups.
Correct.
And we're increasing our numbers of schools moving from commendable to exemplary, which means they're moving into the top 10%.
Yes.
So, we're doing pretty well, right? That's what this whole deck says to me, right? We can make some improvements, but we're doing pretty well here, according to the state report card. 31 of our 34 schools are in the top two categories with the top 10%, we're moving into the top 10%. Am I understanding that correctly?
I think you are, yes.
Okay, thank you, I'm really happy to see that. My other question that I have is that, and I think it's somewhat self-explanatory, but I just wanna make sure I understand it, too, and I know it seems a little bit fuzzy right now, but for the equity continuum, this is also comparing to other schools in the state, just like the IAR scores?
So, for the, no. So, for the equity continuum, like I said, they've, they've created methodologies around each one of those measures to basically score it, to put you somewhere on that, that one-to-four scale. But they've defined basically an absolute scale for that. So, you're not, there's no third step like there is for the, the designations, where they take your score and just see where you are compared to everybody else. They've actually defined, this is what represents minimal gaps, this is what represents small gaps, and they're placing you on a step based on where you fall compared to those benchmarks.
That's good to know, and is that information about what makes up the equity continuum publicly available?
It is. I, I have to be honest with you, it's one of the hardest documents to read that I've ever seen ISB put out, which I think says something. So, yes, I, I think we could probably create a summary for the board if they'd like, and I don't think we necessarily wanna show you for every single measure exactly what the scale is, but we could probably pick a couple within each of the three categories and create a simplified, and not because you need a simplified, but just because if, it takes a long time to decipher the way it's written and, and how they're actually doing the scoring.
And it might be helpful to just have some of those pieces, at least the pieces that you think are most impactful there, as we, as a district and a board, trying to evaluate our own equity work and come up with a framework for finding out where we are, where we're going, and how we're gonna measure that, too.
Right, and, and exactly, and that's exactly what we're doing internally, like I said, with equity leaders within the district, is trying to dissect that and figure out what does it mean, and how does it relate to what we're doing, and is this a good way for us to measure our progress?
Just for clarity on the, your earlier comment about 31 of 34 buildings, the other three buildings don't get, don't receive designations, 'cause that's our Pre-Children Preschool Steps and Gail McKenzie School, so. So, correct, the, it's 31 out of the 30, those are our three large high schools, our seven middle schools, and our 21 elementaries, just for clarity.
Thank you.
Ms. Grover.
So, this is a very detailed presentation, thank you for putting it together. Along the equity lines, too, did they provide any feedback how we should interpret? Along the equity lines too, did they provide any feedback how we should interpret the scores? Or on the continuum or?
No, other than what, what ISB has said is, one, they don't want this to become a comparison between districts of, okay, this district is here and this district there. What they want it to be is something that you can look at internally and, and gauge where you are in the work that you're doing.
Okay.
No, they're, they're not directing of, okay, if you're in this step, these are the things you should work on. I think they're, they want to leave that up to districts to decide. And again, you do have to dig into each one of those measures and see, well, why did we end up in step two? Or why did we end up in step three? Is it one or two of the, all of these components? Because again, you look at that list, there's a lot of components going into each one of those three overall categories. And sometimes you might be in good shape on several of them, but there's one or two that are quite a bit lower.
Okay. Um, my next question, my last question's actually on slide twenty-eight and twenty, and thirty, where it shows our math scores, our, our reading scores have gone down, but our math scores have gone substantially lower for all subgroups. And like you mentioned, it's a national trend as well. So when we did the IAR testing, did they, knowing that there was a learning gap, so to speak, did IAR change its testing, how they tested, um, the math? Or they just kept it the way it was going regardless of?
No, it's, it's, it's the same test meant to, to measure the same skills, um, and using the same scoring process.
Okay.
So it's, it's meant to give you, okay, here's a look of where you were each year. So no, they, they did not change the test itself in response to the pandemic.
You might recall that the previous year in twenty-twenty-one, there was the priority standards, the standards they wanted us to focus on. But that did not mean the assessment changed, um, because they knew, um, that the timing and what that was going to look like was going to look like different. So they, they identified ones to prioritize, but they gave the same test.
So they may not be assessing the correct thing then, in a way?
Well, ag- again, the test is designed to measure mastery across the standards for that grade level. Um, you know.
It provides us opportunities for improvement and we know where we need to focus. And, um, we, we do expect that we're going to s- we expect to have a really, um, that we're going to rebound quickly from what we're seeing, um, compared to how others were performing. Um, we know we're, um, you know, this year's been a way different start than we've had the last two years, which I think will be telling during the results as well.
And the IAR test was just given, um, and it's going to be given again, correct? And so then you can measure the growth.
Correct. Yeah, each, it's given each spring, spring in grades three through eight.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Krubus.
As others have reiterated, this is accountability. You know, we te- how'd we do? We tested and, and we reported and some of our scores dropped. But our designations went up. So overall, relative to the other districts, we did better. So I think that needs to be put in perspective, although our scores went down. Relative to other districts, the drop wasn't as much. I think the opportunity for improvement is on slide fifteen and sixteen. The chronic absentee rates. Sixteen percent of our students missed seventeen or more school days. It's hard to educate when you're not there. Ninety percent or more school days. I mean, that's, uh, it's difficult to learn, it's difficult to teach. And when you break that down by the demographics, where blacks or African-Americans had a twenty-nine percent absentee rate. Low income was thirty-one percent. I think there's a lot of opportunity there for improvement. I would like to see a report that teases out that number a little bit further. We're talking about ten percent or more. But we, that could be seventeen or more school days, that could be thirty school days, that could be, so on a graph, how, you can't just say above, there's got to be a breakdown on how many days. And I think this is an area where, you know, we need to look at addressing through some of our assessments we're doing. Our facilities assessment, instructional assessment, staff assessment. In order to address this opportunity, it's going to take staff involvement and financial resources to reach out to four thousand students and say, how do we get you in schools? Why are you potentially absent? Got to get to know the family. What are the circumstances on why you're not showing up? What's keeping you away? And come up with solutions. So I, at the end of the day, I'd like to hear some solutions and costs to address the absentee rate. And then the next slide, sixteen, is further confusing for me, because then they switch to attendance instead of absentee. But if you flip that back to absenteeism, and we had a forty-one percent absentee rate. Obviously, there's a different measure there, ten and fourteen, COVID, not COVID, going in the number. But the same opportunities there, I think, for improvements. And obviously, we're in a transition. And obviously, we're trying to get things back up to normal. But it's hard to have scores, it's hard to focus on social emotional learning, it's hard to focus on equity if we don't have our people, um, engaged and involved. So I think that's the opportunity we need to look at. That's all I got.
So I, um, I find it hard to find comments after everyone said their, their items on this. But, um, the, the ratings of our schools are really, um, something that we need to thank our students, our staff, our administrators for, um, allowing us to be rated so highly. I mean, we, we were all surprised and glad when we saw this. I think the scores do reflect things that we want to continue to see improve, you know, when you look down into the individual data. But, um, having so many of our schools improve relative to the rest of the state is, is impressive. I also look at different items like slide thirteen that are important data points to look at how we're doing in, um, various measures of success in the district. It is, considering we had two years of very difficult times, um, you know, it's good to, to see this data. And like Mr. Krubus, I was very focused on those two slides about chronic absenteeism, both from a student per- perspective and a teacher. And the student data, just to be clear, um, that was ten percent out of the school year, not counting any time they were out for a COVID quarantine, correct?
Yes. So typically, if a student was quarantined, they had the opportunity to do remote learning. Now, they could still be absent if they didn't engage with the remote learning. But as long as they were engaged with remote learning, they were counted present but remote. But while they were under quarantine, they could have still been marked absent if, if they weren't engaging with the remote learning. But they did have the opportunity to intend while they were under quarantine.
So it could be students were out even more with some remote learning mixed in with their ten percent, um, being not present in school. Yeah. And, um, teachers also had pressures with family and theirs, themselves with, uh, quarantine. And their quarantine counted towards that number, right? So I agree, like, having teachers not in place to teach the students at that percentage is very impactful. So, um, I, I know that we're, uh, very pleased with our school ratings and, uh, the success of our district. But we, uh, will continue to work hard to focus on the other components of learning that we need to be successful, math and reading and writing. And, uh, while also delivering our, um, SEL, um, supports for our students, which we talked about earlier. So, um, thank you very much for the detailed information and, um, interesting results for us. So thank you. So our last item is legislative of advocacy and Board of Education update. I did go to the large district meeting. It was interesting because it was focused on how do you, um, introduce new board members to your board? And, uh, I had listened to a lot of different groups and shared some of our best practices. And I, I'll tell you, I think that we are a leg up on everyone. So it was good to hear. So does anyone have any other items? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
Any opposed? Okay.
Justice says yeah.